You're up. And then try to focus on three different people, three different people.
That's pretty cool.
Oh, I would be almost not sweating my blue jackets.
There should be plugs under every single one. We actually wired it up.
Well, I was reading in my backyard and all this music started to touch. Suddenly your voice came on and it was the bandstand down in Frederickburg Field.
Oh, okay.
I was like, what?
Oh, this is, yes. That is really one of my favorites. Did you greet the words with both of the dice?
Hey, Chris, if you want to come up here real quick, let me show you what I, what I have. So I did with and without for each one.
You didn't? Oh, okay. Okay.
So the top one is with.
Okay.
The bottom is without, and you can just kind of privately. Before we get started, I put one of these flyers for the city's paper opera house fundraiser today in September the third. Everybody just about ready to get going. Give me a minute to get yours up.
I'm not.
Okay. If we believe we're ready, it is six oh one, like all the city council meeting of, what is this, August 16th, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor for Sunday, here. Councilmember for Dancy.
Present.
Councilmember, present. Councilmember, no.
Present.
Councilmember, who know that? Councilmember, Larissa, air, and Mayor.
Here. Thank you very much. I would ask if the agenda that we need to add, delete, or change.
I think we're gonna add a swearing in of one of our officers.
That is, that is true. Is that, do we have that officer here or we don't?
Yes. Supposed to be here as well as.
Then we'll do that right after six A, which is the approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion, please.
Brett's moved to the room to be attended and amended.
Three seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you. All were favored. Okay, this time we have housekeeping matters. Anything anybody would like to speak about before we get started? Yes, please, Tracy.
My most cheap on 12th Street today because a road coming out of our yard to not have it stuck time. And that one's got a cheap on button.
On him law, you mean?
Whatever that road is that comes out of. Our yard on two 12th.
On the 12th. Interesting, okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Matt. Housekeeping matters and I believe Ms. Simonson may go over this in her report out. However, just in case. The Pine Street has been under construction now for two months or so. Is there any timeframe on when that paving project is going to be completed?
Do you want to go? I, I talked to the street department today. The Leadville sanitation just can't complete the project. I mean, I don't know how else to say it. They still have two manholes that they haven't even started digging yet, that they had to put in manholes.
It's a huge concrete home thing.
Oh, yeah.
Probably are going to be undergrounded.
Yeah, they are. They are. They're giant. And so we're very frustrated. We're going to start paving Second Street on Monday. He also asked that the second crew for that, that contractor start building the pans. Starting on Eighth Street and moving down to Fifth Street. But that's as far as we can go because those, those two manholes are going on Third and Fourth Streets. And so they just have us, they have a stop in our tracks. But we're gonna, we'll start paving Second on Monday and then we'll go over, hopefully they'll have those pans. They maybe will do all five of those pans on Monday. They say they can. And so we may, then as soon as they're done paving on Second Street, we'll start on Pine and start coming across. When we get stopped. We may go, we had always wanted to do the first four blocks on Sixth Street. And we may go try and do that. My fear is we could run out of money. So don't be surprised if the mayor comes begging for more money for paving. Before we end this, these projects, just kind of a, I don't know that we will, but I'm worried that we might. So the answer to your question is, we cannot give you a timeline because we're not in control of that. And we have, we have. Frankly, we have been on Leadville sanitation. Four months to get this done and it's not done. So.
Mayor, are they, are they responsible for the paving themselves? I mean, they're the ones that ripped it up, correct?
Where, well, the answer is we're going to split the cost with them. We don't know what the split's gonna be. We'll do a calculation based on how much of the pavement is theirs and how much would be still ours. So no, we're not going to bear a hundred percent of that. And the paving up on Second is supposed to be a four-way split. Between the city, sanitation, Parkville Water, and XL.
Okay, and who's performing the paving?
I don't. I don't remember the name of the company. We took bids, the street department, you know, helped select that person. Trying to remember. Does, do you remember his first name? It's Martin. Yes, it is. But that. But what's the name of this company? Okay.
And, and the only reason why I bring it is. I'm certain that wasn't very desirable during the race. But also, I hate to say it, but we're running out of time to pave at this rate. I mean. I don't know how that goes, but I really hope that we're able to put some sort of product down before paving season ends. That's a, that's a. I'd hate to have a dirt road there on Pine.
We could not agree with you more.
Yeah, so Councilmember for Dancy, the mayor and I just met with the streets department last week and that's exactly what we said is that TikTok, we're running out of time and it's not acceptable to have that not paved before, where.
We wanted to actually pave Second Street last year. That's how bad this is. And we still haven't been able to do it because the utilities can't complete their projects.
Well, I appreciate the report. Thank you for answering the questions.
You're welcome. And I, I hope to your point. That within the next two weeks, that Second and Pine will be done. And we may be able to get Sixth Street up, up to James in, in the mix of all that. I hope. Jen?
I had heard some concern over the closure of East Sixth earlier than what has happened in the past for the recent weekend. I'm concerned and displeasure with that. I did not experience it myself. I'm just.
I don't know if that's correct. We, we have traditionally, well, we've left you, close on a Friday mornings.
Something on Wednesday. It had something to do with Wednesday. And that was what I, what the displeasure was, was it being closed on Wednesday?
If it was closed on Wednesday, I'm not aware of that.
It closed on, and it's a for the expo. And it'd be only because the east side, it's a disaster right now with the smell and. Can't find the road.
The reason, the reason I'm puzzled is, is the expo is Friday and Saturday.
And let's first, and the first, and I think this is reminding, I think this discussion we had was that. The first part of Sixth Street was actually, you're supposed to be able to access the, the bathroom.
Well, you could, it was closed off, and when, when we do close it up from the alley up.
Right.
East from the alley, but we, we don't close off in the alley to Harrison.
Yeah, that's interesting because I don't believe the expo started.
Well, and perhaps plus the east side is so, isn't a train wreck right now anyway, that compounded. This, this person's concerns, but that was, sounds like reasonable to inquire about.
And was the concern just the person? I guess we want feedback on how to better they. To let access cause a concern because they wanted to get to work it through.
To, and to inform their home on that side. And it hadn't happened that way in the past, kind of like what we just said, we've always expected it starting Thursday evening, but this Wednesday thing was new.
Okay, and we can. We can pull their TP and see what the request was.
Yeah, I don't remember it being closed on Wednesday, but I don't, I don't really remember in the case to confirm it was closed on Wednesday. So I'm not sure why that was.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of quick things. For those of you who have been paying any attention to the Irish Memorial at Evergreen Cemetery. Liam O'Sullivan, which is the statue, was placed today. After all this time, years of work and, and probably the Irish network and the Irish government all pitching in. That was, that was a pretty big deal. Liam O'Sullivan was, was crafted in, in Ireland, in County Cork. However, he was forged in Loveland, Colorado. And so once it was done being forged in Loveland, then they brought it here and they, they placed him today. So I went out and took some pictures and I thought it was pretty, pretty momentous. We're going to have a, a city, it's, it's gonna be a city sponsored event, the Beth Teesbong Award. We're providing the paper opera house for a paper opera house fundraiser. The Vale Valley Band is gonna be performing. I would like to know if city council would consider allowing some expense relative to that. Maybe not to exceed a thousand dollars out of our contingency fund, if that's a possibility.
What would that be for?
That would be for offsetting some of the expenses. The entertainer film would be paid, but offsetting some of their expenses. And one of the band members would like to have a room overnight. And the others, dinner, and that's about it. So it's, it's not very much.
I'm okay.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Dana's up there.
She, she is, she is the budget talk on contingent. How much, how much money's left in there, Dana?
I think we have.
We have, we have plenty, yeah.
Twenty six thousand dollars remaining, not my.
Yeah. That's how, that's right. I have a bracket.
I can do a little math, but here it is.
Who can get it quicker? Donna, go.
Yeah.
Well.
Donna probably has a spreadsheet.
I do have a spreadsheet. So far we've extended, that's a twenty three thousand. I don't remember what we said, what it was. Now I am gonna be buying Christmas decorations during the next week that we allocated twenty thousand dollars.
Was that a contingent line on? Okay, all right.
But it's separate than what we. It's separate than the discretion of, and it was, the, the twenty thousand dollars was specific to say Christmas decorations.
Right.
And then we have the sort of all purpose portion.
Gotcha.
Yeah, or Councilmember, were you able to find it and not, but anyway, I can put it in my city administration report, how much we have left.
I'm calculating that we have close to thirty grand.
Yeah, does.
It sounds about right. It started about thirty eight. Yeah. All right, thank you. That's it for my housekeeping matters. Anybody else?
I would just like to mention that. Since we're talking about finding stuff. I thought the detour for Boombase just being all popular worked out great. I thought it was even better than the other way.
I, I would agree. I think it was, it was, it was more simple. It just made a lot of sense. So.
Well, plus, when you use mine as a detour, it's hard to get. Back to the east side of Harrison.
Yeah.
I, I will say that during, I, I, I think it was Boomdays. When people were part on both sides of Pine, there is no way that that can be a two-year straight.
Oh, fine?
Yeah.
Oh, that, it's not.
I was really glad nobody was turning.
Normally, if Pine is part of the detour, we know part, we do no parking on both sides. Yeah, we didn't have to do that, actually. It's a real.
But even though it wasn't labeled, I mean, it was, it, there was just no way that two cars could come at each other.
So in terms of the housekeeping, Tracy, I will check on that stop sign tomorrow. And see what the status is there. And then we'll also check on what the TUP was, because either, you know. We, we've been pretty thorough with the TUP. We've, we've had a lot of meetings around it. So I'm a little surprised by it, but we'll see.
Yeah, that. I also would like to mention that the EV charging station is working.
And I would like to make our deputy city clerk for her persistence in sitting on the boat. So you kept telling us there was no problem with it. Because they kept checking your computer on their end. And she was persistent in screenshots of it not working.
That was great. And, and so Maida got a ticket. I mean, you know, a ticket for the repair. And three weeks later. I get a call from a guy in Phoenix and he had reset it from Phoenix. And I said, what were you doing three weeks ago? I mean, seriously? And I, I, I just, I mean, I, I think I was nice about it, but I really chewed him out. And part of that was, you know, that thing's under warranty and when the warranty's up. I said, this is a bad piece of equipment. You've given us a bad charging station. And when the warranty's up, we're gonna have a real problem. So, yeah, I was, I was not pleased. But thank you, Maida. Anything else?
Do you need a motion to release that money for the fundraiser or will we just?
No, if everybody agrees, I'm fine with it. Okay, next up we have public, public comments on Ivan's not on the agenda. If anybody here or on Zoom. Let's start with Zoom. If anybody on Zoom would like to speak to city council on Ivan's not on the agenda, please raise your hand or just unmute and let us know that you would like to speak.
This is Andy Hofer. I would like to, please.
Andy, go right ahead.
Thank you, Greg. Again, this is Andy Hofer. I wanted to discuss. So is everyone there familiar with the base camp sign at, at six oh one West Sixth Street?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's being, it blew down a while ago and it's being rebuilt. I kind of drew the short straw in the neighborhood to be the one to see if. It's, has the proper approvals and all that according to code. I understand, I, I spoke with Lori Ty. And all she was able to tell me was that it had been there a while so that they were gonna approve it. What my unanswered question really is, is was it, was it legally constructed initially? Whatever, whatever code was applicable back then. I'm curious if it, if it met that code, if any. And if it did, great. And if it didn't, then I'd like to. I'd like to contest it going back up.
Please.
Um, Mr. Hofer actually contacted me about those two and I did a little research. And I believe that that base camp sign is considered a legal non-conforming sign. So it went up before our sign code was adopted.
Yeah, I know it has been up there a long time, yeah.
So what the, the code says is a legal non-conforming sign can be replaced. I'm using the exact wording. If for no fault of the owner, it is damage to the whole staff. I think the issue here is that they are not replacing it. They are upgrading it and. And in that case, it should not be allowed. You either replace what was there. Or you come to city council and ask for other areas. You don't get to improve it. Without, and I know, and violate that assigned code that's worth attention.
I'd like that our city attorney weigh in on that because we did have a question about, you know, the grandfathering in of signage and. I'm recalling that she said, and actually filter Jonathan, didn't need to be at this meeting, but I won't back with her. But, but what she says is, you know, that may be treated private property. But public property may not, that can be the same case. So, so the legal non-conforming use. Her, what I thought she would say is that that is not true for public property. So this is not. So then you may be correct that they're replacing it, but it's upgraded and maybe it's gonna have for ending on whether or not that is.
I think that's all that is my thoughts. Okay, so a little more insight into the station.
Okay, I'll put it on my list of things to ask for.
Thank you for that research. Good.
So I apologize, I had a little bit of a hard time understanding that on my Zoom. I apologize. Could someone reiterate that?
Andy, this is, this is Greg. Yeah, we are going to look into if that sign is legal non-conformity. And if it has been, you know, it has been, let's say blown down. I don't know, I don't know what took the sign down, but regardless of what took the sign down, if they're replacing it with something different. An upgrade of that sign, then we have to check with our city attorney. And see if, if they are allowed to do that or if they have to come before the city and ask for variance.
Okay, and so, so two questions, please. What constitutes an upgrade, I guess, is one. And then my other question is. Have we all, have we determined that it was legally constructed initially? Was, was there, was there literally no sign code back then or are we unsure about that? Those two questions.
We're unsure about that. We believe it may have been constructed before sign code was implemented. But we would have to check on that as well. I just know it's been there for a very long time.
Yeah. If we could, if we could determine those two things, please, what constitutes an upgrade? And then if it was legally constructed initially, that would be great.
We will follow up with you, Andy.
That was easy. I appreciate you guys.
No, you did the easy part. Now we have to do the hard part.
Well, that's what I mean. Easy for me and I, and, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, guys. Could I mention one more thing quickly?
Go ahead.
I heard someone mentioned something about a stop sign and it, and it prompted me of something I thought about for a long time. There, there, there are sporadic yield signs around, around town that I think would be more appropriate as stop signs. There's some on the east side. I think there's one on West Eight. Anyway, I always feel a little sketchy when I'm approaching those and there's a yield sign. I don't know how much people. Honor that yield or not, or, and with, with our increased population, I thought maybe it'd be appropriate to turn those into stop signs as well.
We have, I have to discuss the one on West Eight with the street department. We hadn't reached a conclusion. I got on the back burner, but I, I would agree. I think that's a, we're seven swings around and tease into eight. I think that may be an important place for a stop sign rather than the old sign.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Andy. Tim, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council. My name's Tim Bergman. I'm the Lake County manager. I just wanted to say thank you for the city's participation in last night's. OHV work session with the county and the town hall with the public. We had a really good listening session with the public and we look forward to collaborating with the city. Going forward on OHVs in our community.
Thank you, Tim. And I would, I would add to that. I was at the county commissioners meeting today and I complimented them. On really holding a, a really, you know, well managed, very even tempered city hall. Anybody else on Zoom that'd like to speak to city council? Is there anybody here in chambers who would like to speak to city council? Oh, Christie, what a shot.
Thank you, Councilwoman Christie Larda here from Lakeview, Illinois. Wanted to give you an update on homelessness because. Things have shifted a little bit since I talked to you just two weeks ago because we're moving. Very aggressively on this work. So what's happening now is the subcommittee is, is working very hard to prepare to put in an application for financing. For homelessness projects. And so instead of doing the quick strategic planning that we were planning on doing, we're just going to hit a few of those points. And then starting in January, we're going to do a full strategic planning for homelessness that we would love to have robust community participation in. Think about any department who might have interaction with people experiencing homelessness. We want all those people involved in the planning. Kind of think back to the 2019 housing action plan. It's gonna be a robust process. It's gonna take three weeks to get it set up. So just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. Gonna start and we're gonna give you like two months of the housing break and then die right back.
I would like to ask, you know, you, you, you have the, the study that's been released. Can you give us some insights into where homelessness is most prevalent in the local?
I think it fluctuates quite a bit depending on season. We have figured out that our. Population of people experiencing homelessness is quite invisible most of the year and presents more as couch surfing. Living in cars and things like that as opposed to traditionally living outdoors and then. Like abandoned homes and things like that. But we do know in the summer, as I'm sure you guys all know, that there is extensive camping below the dam. On the LM and, and things like that. But we have estimated that there on any given night, there's between ten and thirty people experiencing homelessness in the county.
Okay, thank you.
That is for just doubling up as well. Doubling up being a, like, having. Doubling up being a, like, having more people than what is suitable for one house. Yeah.
Yeah. So for example, I know of one, one young man right now who is living with three other service. So all four of them are service industry folks and they are, I would say young adults, but, but they're like almost thirty, maybe not young adults anymore. And they, you know, would very much love to buy a house or rent a house on their own, but obviously we know that that is not quite the option and it's against their lease. They're not allowed to have that many people in there, but they don't have that kind of option.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anybody else who would like to speak to city council? Okay, thank you all very much. At this time, we have the approval of the minutes. This is the August second, twenty twenty-two minutes. I just saw one thing on, on page three. It's under B. And it's down to D. And if I'm not mistaken, it says remove city attorney's suggestion and kept staggered. I think it should be staggered terms. Instead of staggering terms.
Could be either.
I suppose. Any other changes to the minutes? That I would entertain a motion, please.
Let me allow moves to bring the minutes with the change section D under page three.
Do I have a second?
A little second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, we are going to have the oath of office for one of our young police officers who has just graduated from the academy.
Please reach your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brenda Kiravell.
I, Brenda Kiravell.
Do solemnly swear that I will support
Do solemnly swear that I will support
the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal laws and code of the city of Leadville.
And the municipal codes and laws of the city of Leadville.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Without consideration to a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religion, religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap for disability.
Handicap for disability.
I affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties.
I affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of Leadville Police Department Officer with fidelity.
Of Leadville Police Department Officer with fidelity.
I enter this obligation freely without any reservations.
I enter this obligation freely without any reservations.
You actually need the sun. Now let's test that scribble is actually.
Oh yeah, that is my signature.
And one of these is
Brenda be our first force man.
Yeah. She could be the first patrol in the middle of that. We didn't lose five siblings.
We have, we have, you know, we haven't even talked to Dr. Ariel about yet, so we're extremely happy to have two new additions to our department and at the OHV meeting last night, one of the issues for many, many stresses on our community, but OHV in general is that we need enforcement of our current laws. And so I really appreciate the addition of four new officers and really it made a huge difference of what we can do for this community. So welcome to the team. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have the presentation of the twenty twenty-one audit. Paul?
Thank you. This life, I knew typo and maybe it was my worst typo ever. Maybe say the construction contract should be executed and wrote the construction contractor.
No, we understand completely.
Yours was a lot of, um, if you wanted to be a
One person could like to share us.
Okay. Quick introduction. My name is Paul Akis. I am CPA of the Super Amon and our, I'm with both CPA firm and our firm is a little unique. We do pretty much all the audits of all the municipal governments and school districts and central counties. And so I'm pleased to be here to walk you through the two thousand and one audited financial statements. And I think sometimes it's just important to have a quick overview of what we actually do. So we bring three CPAs over and camp out and pretty much drive down lots with really different questions, but included in that process is, it's on your screen and this is maybe a little small, but I'll we do an audit. This is actually your audit software or our audit software with your audit. We do planning is the first section. And part of that, probably the most important part of the planning is I actually go over and read all the resolutions and documents. Trying to understand what decisions you as a consultant made that impacted very interesting things. And then the next significant area of planning involves meeting with all your departments and understanding the internal controls. So who makes the deposit, it's checked, it's checked. System, then weaknesses in those controls. And that's, that's what this section here is. You can see we, you know, network building department, payment shoulder, corporate admin, finance director, payroll, PD, kind of all those areas. And then we, once we do that, we kind of look at a variety of transactions and I'll just walk you through. This is actually an Excel spreadsheet of every disbursement in the city name. And so as an example, we go through that and we can run certain tests on it. So kind of the whole audit needs to be, you run random samples and pull certain documents, but really what you're doing now is looking at entirety of this population and you're pulling transactions that have certain, have certain number or so. As an example, if we're looking at a credit card bill, was the charge on the side of it? Was it a weekend? Was it a certain vendor call? It's a bar. You want to look at that transaction. Same thing with journal entries. When they occurred, they were current in the rule tree. And if you look at this, we kind of pull, I don't know if you know the inference law, but I just thought this is cool. We took the whole database of population and ran this test on it and we actually if you hop outside of the red lines here, that's gonna mean there's a certain problem to address. Your entire database in this particular test fit within that. And then we look for certain words like dollar. We, we look for anything with your name. Well, here you can see there's a hundred dollar charge that your husband did, which was just a little transaction. And so that pops out or you run that for all departments of departments and some Sarah on here too. She will, it's all work. So you pull those transactions off and just make sure that they're viewed, which they were. Once we've done the planning, we move on to the field work section and that involves verifying numbers. So you can see there's documents in here on you know, your, your authorized signers and what's your investment policy? And then if your general checking account has, you know, one point four million, you've got to actually scan in the bank statement. Make sure that it's reconciled correctly. This is all the reconciliation. And here's the main statement. And what we're doing is we're verifying the financial statement, say the X dollars in the bank. It's actually in the bank. It's insured by FDIC or public deposit protection and state statutes. It's reasonable proven investment for you to have as a town. We go through all your receivables. If somebody owns, owes their town money, we want to make sure that they pay timely, if they're not paying, we're following up. It gets deposited timely and put into the correct account. We go through all your capital assets, are they insured? Are we appreciating them appropriately or you know, all accounted for? Comes payable. Obviously, if the disbursement goes out, I want to make sure it's paid timely, you know, interest and things like that. Is it coded prior? So when you look at your budget, you know that payroll expenses, payroll, any utility expenses, utilities. Is it related to town business? A reasonable, prudent expense for the tax payer to pay. And it wasn't approved and budgeted by US council. Same thing with equity. There's various requirements for equity, like taper reserve and such further requirements. We will go all that. We spend a little extra time, you know, urban overall authority. And then there's a variety of other things that we look through in the past. You've got like various that taper dollar questions or, you know, sales tax dollar question. We want to make sure that even if it happened twenty years ago, if the elector gave you approval to collect some money, to spend some money that you're following through what was promised when that balance question is passed. Then really the goal is to produce audited financial statements, which are in your packet. And look, I, I recognize for you guys that I'm not someone that looks in packets all the time. It was a pain in the lung. It's sixty-nine different pages here. And if you look at that, you have to understand that it's not just for you. It wasn't our intention to have you read sixty hundred different pages. It's really because this document is gonna go to a lot of different parties. It's gonna go to all your granting agencies. So you receive federal grants. It's gonna go to the federal grant, you receive state grants. It's gonna go to state. If, if you don't have any debt, you have to have a CC. It goes near insurance rating agencies, company, rating agency companies, banks, investment companies, kind of all those state auditor, just a lot of different parts to use it. In fact, if you look on here, anyone who actually read the very end, you can see this is your local highway finance report. And we have to include that as a state power use. So that's why it's in seventy pages long. But I'm gonna turn it down because I know some people have heard of my account. I'm sure they're all right. It's super awesome. But the entire audit financial statements are covered by independent power report. That means all those parties that look at it and rely on it and know that this represents your fundamental position. Some people consider that as a clean audit opinion. And I take that for a lot of sort of, I think it's great that Leadville has the controls and the personnel that together financial statements. There is a management discussion analysis, section D, we data can be nothing else. It does have some charts and graphs. You can see this does chart out your fund balance. You think your fund balance is heading bank balance by each type of fund over the last ten years. It's going up, so that's always a good, good trend. People like it when it goes up on the right. And that means we have more in our bank balance than this year when we did at the start of the year. And that's largely also as a result of this, this is your sales tax. So the way set trouble, the way things were set up in Colorado, a lot of states is in school district, they're running by property taxes. Cities are funded by combination property taxes and sales taxes. That way, you know, school district is kind of fundamentally stable and property taxes, I think, used to be relatively stable. So that's why sales tax, a lot of our Canadian town and software or rural construction. So so really sales taxes are one of the main funding sources that you have. You can see there was in, I think at the end of two thousand and nineteen, a Supreme Court case, South Carolina versus Wayfair. And only this time we started blocking sales tax on sales. And that's really helped a lot in this. Here. Only probably everything that I'll just point out on the report is you have you have four different ones here. We have the general fund conservation trust, fire operations and urban overall if you look, this is money that comes in and here are your revenues. Think of that as deposits in your bank. So you deposit about six point five billion across all our funds. Then money goes out and there is these are big categories. There's more to go in the back as much as I can. Money comes in, money goes out. We'll get to the third line from the bottom and change in fund balances. That's how much did we add or use of your fund balances and your bank balances? So the general fund added seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars last year. I like to take, and we started at two point six million, so you ended at three point three million. I like to take when we're looking at financial statements, the three point three million and divide it and what you spent to get a percentage. So you spent four point eight billion, you got three point two million in the bank. That's a sixty-nine point two percent reserve. So, sorry. So anyway, sixty-nine percent reserve when I look at that, that's a really solid reasonable reserve to have. That's usually, most governments are anywhere from, you know, thirty-five to two hundred. But most are thirty-five to, so, you know, so you guys are writing that. Generally, the smaller government, the bigger percentage reserve. There's just a lot of different factors that go into that. But I guess what I'm telling you is you have a, you know, sixty-nine percent reserve, which strikes me as a reasonable fund balance standard. Most of that increase came from increased sales tax and I'm sure seeing different capital products, as you mentioned earlier. Probably will spend some of that down in the future. There's a lot of additional information in here. I can all spend a lot of time going through it. It includes things like, you know, what's your, what is your taper question here? You can see this was the two thousand and seventeen though. And how we believe we're complying with that. Where are we holding our money? Do you have a very reasonable balances that you're holding in your cash accounts? What happened with capital assets? You can see this is very effective for us. What do we have with future statements? So these are your future payments, kind of your debt. We should lease us the same that's going to a bank and so you'll still have a number of various clauses. And we'll be paid off in one twenty-seven. And then there's a lot of pension information in the video that include lease buyer pension. So that's the process. That's the financial results. But there is another document that I'd like to share with you on some regulations.
I have a couple real quick. You talked about FDIC insurance. What is the, the limit of FDIC insurance?
So it's two hundred and fifty thousand, but when a local government goes over two hundred and fifty thousand, another protection comes in for local governments called PPA, public protection act. Um another protection comes in for local governments called PDPA public protection act. And so um basically that bank has to set aside a security in your name. And so they would fail and we would give that security. And so when we're audited and we actually go through to make sure that all of that's our PDPA insurance. Um just to get something fair with that.
There's no limit, okay?
There's no limit.
Yeah, that was why I asked, I I actually wasn't aware of that. Um and I have another question and and uh Lori and I have been discussing, what is a proper reserve? For our city and and I mean, it's a, you know, Dola says one thing and and common sense may dictate another. Um and you know, I I don't know, uh Laura thinks it probably should be about three million dollars.
Uh well, I I guess my my point is I would like to see it a little higher, given the fact that there's a lot of discussion about the recession and. I would like, yeah, I don't know if you'd give us an exact dollar amount, but we spent a lot of time rebuilding departments and and. A lot of time, I mean, we're spending more time making sure the place that the last thing we wanted to do is get to a point where. Where we've gotten with people and we want to retain them and then we can't afford it. And that is not something that are able to be successful, so I wanted to find out. You know, when you're talking about operating, um but are you saying we're sixty nine percent are operating budget is what we have in reserves?
I'm saying you have three point three million one point one, so maybe no fun and that is sixty nine percent of what you spent. So not offering completely half all. And I, you know, I. My job is make sure the numbers are correct, it's kind of your job to decide what you're comfortable with, I can put a pin and. Uh move out of the spot there, but uh you know, I want to make sure you guys are correct numbers uh to make good financial decisions. Um I can tell you that most governments are. You know, the small ones, no one really goes under thirty five, forty percent, and that's because you have to have. A flow of reserve, you don't collect your property taxes. What's going on? Um you you just have to have a flow, nobody's spending the money, you have to have something. And so you're you never, anytime you're on thirty five percent, you. I would kind of be hey, be really scared. Anything over that is really kind of your perspective. What do you have coming down the line, the savings, what do you have coming along, the catwinds, what, you know? Some people want larger reserves, need larger reserves, some people don't, I don't know where.
So for us, like two, two hundred percent would be, so four, four million out of years, two, two hundred percent people in two years, right?
At zero revenue.
So if you if you didn't collect a penny, you know, in the next year, you're gonna get through seventy percent, sixty nine percent.
And that's also a way for decisions that may have been made that. Our costs, we spent it money, right, that wasn't excluded from the budgetary. Uh basically, I'm asking, it's, it would be like with that, you know, we're still making revenue, divisions that were made in, was this twenty twenty one? You know, the budget's coming out of that, I guess. Right, the number that we are seeing, total expenditures coming out of that would be something that we are still making revenue. I'd assume if we aren't gonna be making enough revenue to there's a reception, we wouldn't be spending that much.
Great, that's a good point, sure.
Right, correct, and that's what, yeah, exactly, that's, you're right, your your budget's what you. What you are are planning to spend and obviously circumstances change, you're gonna do stuff. But you don't want to be like the producer.
Right, yeah.
There's gonna be a plenty of demand on on every government's dollars because. You know, you had a lot of what you're collecting is, you know, South Dakota, but also just inflation, you know, you got. Nine percent inflation, right? Uh yeah, we're older right now, it's crazy. Um and so, you know, if your property taxes or your sales taxes are one point three percent, you would, you know, in real dollars be behind last year. So as everything catches up and things resales and, you know, the cost goes up, you're gonna see. All these fund balances where it may jack up. Um so, let me just, sorry, was there any other questions on financial statements? Okay. So uh there is a letter that we're required to provide you, a standard letter that comes along with every audit we do. Um and we have to point out a couple of things from the, you've been on all areas of the making word. Um and unfortunately, we don't get it right, plain English, which was, I was frustrated with you, but. In English, uh the first paragraph that says qualitative aspects of account policies means. Um were there new accounting policies implemented and changed the practical statements now? Um the second part of that is what estimates do you have? Sometimes you have hard to estimate, obviously, maybe environmental liability or legal liability, but you know, you have liability, it's gonna cost. You guys really will interview that, it's how long is the uh asset that we missed as an example, a standard life for only this thirty five years? I'm gonna be aligned with you standard lives and that's what I would continue to do. Um same thing with uh the pension for environment police, uh pension administration. FPBA, you get uh you guys participate in that and so we get actually a lot of those from that. But it's all. So I I wouldn't change anything with that. Um no difficulties encountered in performing, we stopped Martha and one of uh her. After I leave, she can tell you, sorry. Um corrected and uncorrected statements, that's, um did we have material adjustments or were changing things? We have, and that means geologists, we did have geologists that none of them were so were material. It's a lot of, you know, oh, maybe we should show this here or this is there. Um when, when you have a lot of geologists adjusting cash, you know, adjusting concert seat or constable. That's when I get nervous and, I mean, we have to fix something. And uh in finance, no disagreements with management. Um there is a new accounting standard, you go to, um you know, any. Any educational classes, then we talk about that, we'll figure that for you, it's just. Segregation of duties, just keep in mind that you do have a small accounting staff and you kind of have a couple of people that have a lot of control over. Over the financial reporting system, typically that's uh how you kind of handle that is. Donovan's and stuff with the treasurer and they signed them off. We kind of got all of those, but I couldn't tell necessarily whether or not they were in the monthly or they're kind of hold out here and. I think it's better if they kind of date all those and send them back and say, yeah, that's something. Cyber security is a nightmare right now. Um there are numerous, you know, square governments that have been here, the bodies that have been here. Um and, you know, ransomware. Don't go, the day doesn't go by where even the. Some fictitious email request and wire transfer or something else. Um I think you should consider uh server security insurance on here. It's just. I can't tell them whether to have it, I can tell you, I just think you need to make a conscious decision, you know. I don't think that it was necessarily on the list, where what actually ends up in Irish is if you had utility where you belong. But nonetheless, it's good for Bob. Um and the last is at least part of the rest, uh we'd like to get them a stamp that says for a model, you know, this bank account. Um if somebody can get enough, that would be great. Um and if you get a track, sequentially track tickets, so we can always say, hey, this ticket block is out of this officer. But those are all the things that just pop out in your in your departments, um so overall, that is. That's what I bring to you.
Uh can you bring Billy back?
Can't, she retired, it's killing me.
Sorry, sorry to bring up a sore subject.
I just thought that the cyber security insurance, what type, what type of? Act does that, does it cover the city's costs or? Uh let's say we are at pocket. Funds or does it cover equipment, we need to replace equipment, or what 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 would it cover?
It depends on the coverage, but um you know, it can cover equipment, the, you know. Cadillac plan is still out in the better term, will cover equipment, in initial runs and one of fees up to a certain limits. And uh I can, I don't really do this is. So, and I think if I recall, I can remember using the hosted version of uh the cell or you can use an old server here. Yeah, so I think, you know. When you're, when you're hosting your own financial software here. It just, to me, is a little different risk profile and having the cloud. Um under the assumption that Castle has a lot of IT experts that can come. But.
Wouldn't a backup server, are we backed up to a a different server but not to the cloud, correct, correct?
Yeah, what usually happens is the way. There's a. You're right, you know, going through that, but I can do that at least. Doing this and if so, is it worth the cost?
I think we have avoided backing up the cloud, who is quite expensive, uh but it may be something we should be considering.
Yeah, look, I'm not on my team, that's for you, I just snuggle, it's. Wire transfers and cybersecurity are a. And you have to keep in mind that all these meetings are online, I can't remember the firm each town, but uh some you. They had on their website a wire transfer forum to change for vendors, so. Somebody watched the meeting, they knew they had a bridge contract, they filled out all bridge contract with the vendor, faxed it to the accountant. And said, hey, change this, no, we don't wire transfer to their account. Like overseas and, you know, they're all actually two. But so it's just a lot of risks like that.
So that's, that's my question on coverage, that's what I'm saying, the account is where we are tricked into sending money. Somewhere else and with the coverage, yeah, that's what. Because what I mean, wire fraud is rampant and and companies that have way more specific than than we do. You know, finding companies that that. Someone doesn't call, confirm a wire, takes the instructions from an email and wires five hundred thousand dollars and and. So I I what I wanted to find out is what type of coverage, what would cover we.
It wouldn't cover what, it would just cover packing, yes, but, um you know, and there is, you can talk to Castle, I'm pretty sure. They have this, but um. And I I I'm not saying you should have this, but we in regard to where fraud, how. How it's working as organizations are moving, the risk of wire fraud from you, the organization to your vendor. So as an example, on certain clients, our administrative person has to log on, verify the data, upload the invoice. Um and we won't get paid by a wire, we have to deflect, yes, it has to go here to this bank account. And that puts the risk on, you know, us versus me calling, I'm saying, do this. So virtually all software companies are kind of helping spend their pension. Module that pushes it to the matter, I'm not saying you should do that, because it might be expensive, but. And that's what we do to answer uh where. So if you guys make a motion to accept this, we start, we pull the draft off and start getting the follow up. Everyone that needs it and, yeah, it's normally motion and so, so I don't know if that was on your agenda or not.
It's not, but I would entertain a motion to accept uh the uh twenty twenty one audit by McMahon and Associates.
We'll move to itself, the twenty twenty one audit by McMahon and Associates.
Thank you, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all were in favor.
Thank you, appreciate your presence.
Thank you, Paul. Okay. Next up, we have department reports, uh we appear to be missing our. Police, um. Okay, in that case, um. Do you want to go ahead and give a report or just have people ask questions if they have questions?
I I mean, I just wanted to know our uh chief. And our Alan Shepherd manager have a prior commitment this evening, so that is why they are not here and I staff them in advance if they're leaving. They wanted me to convey to all, so for the police department, uh you saw who's bringing in, uh we had uh two candidates. Uh graduated with the post academy last Friday, just uh very exciting and we're very happy to be. Um now leading staff with law enforcement officers, so Officer Carraro. And Officer Barnett graduated on Friday and started working on Saturday, so maybe we're on duty a whole weekend. And we're certainly happy to have them uh on board. As far as uh other issues with the um police, I'll get to this one more in the city administrative report, but. Just so you all know, this far is that the events, the two of them, big events, the Pat Boone days and uh. Uh the race last weekend, no significant adventure as far as these part, I mean, we have the running, no calls, but no- nothing. Nothing really out of line, or then we will. Calls that we 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 didn't like start on the weekend, so that is very impressive.
Excellent, any questions uh on the police department report? I have a couple. Uh the first one is, uh we are, we have three community service officers currently, one of them is is set to retire women as well. Is that correct?
Uh that is my understanding, but I would like to confirm that with our police chief, it is, has been my understanding, but.
So here's my question.
I talked to someone, you mean exactly, they want to retire, so someone could change their mind and uh up to their retirement dates, that's the best information I have right now.
Um based on that, have if you had any conversations with the chief about? How he wants, does he want to replace that person with a C S O, or is he looking to replace that person with a police officer?
Uh well, so for for this year, it's not budgeted to be a post certified officer. It would be a community service officer and I do have some uh.
Your timing is terrible, Al.
Well, we just started our performance and um I have presented the information we wanted about. Our new recruits and not well, we sort of went aside, we did, the mayor didn't have a question about. C S O and that the retirement work, C S O and whether or not we want to. Wanted to replace that person, replace that position with another C S O officer, and my answer was, that's a good budgeting for this year. Um what I'd like to do is have some discussions with our team, if, you know, that a time that does happen. Um what that position may look like, whether it's C S O or I have some other ideas about maybe. You know, what what we might need around the team as well about.
All right, thank you, mostly curiosity question. Uh the second thing is, we have a, we've had a huge problem with one particular family and two dogs. It it's been through the court a number of times and then it was continued again and then it was a no show at this last court appearance. And so my question is, wh- what do we do about that at that point? When people just completely want uh, hi Chris. Did you really, but do we act on those? That's great to hear, thank you, I didn't know.
Different person, but we had, we had somebody come in and turn himself in and. I watched him upstairs and he, there's, he was a violent against him, this other, this other, you find now that you talk about. Um we're well aware of the fact, there's bad warrants out there, and we see them, we will arrest them.
Okay, thank you, that's 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 what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you, that's 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 what I wanted to know.
They do not have to be returned to the families and and you know, to their owners if they are down the bar.
I I'm pleased to hear it, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just commenting on that, that retiring is supposed to take place. I'd like to replace that individual with a full-time animal control service officer. So we have acute need for that. So one of the things on their budgeting board, twenty twenty three, gets the um. The training, the certification that that person would require.
Great, any other questions for the police department? Thank you very much. Uh next up, we have fire department report.
Steve, uh I'll just go to the highlights here, uh so we're doing a place standby right now at the airport. It's starting to be thirteen, gonna go till September sixteen, bill of health computers testing now too. This will be the second time that they've been out here, so they must be certified in that aircraft, the greater capabilities. Uh we went on deployment, Texas. About sixteen days ago and we're back. Six oh two, we're going to shop for a service and a new water pump, and then. Six oh two, when the tactical tender will go up on available, and next couple of days, we're gonna try to deploy two pieces of equipment. Based on our ambitions. Which probably advantage of that this year.
Even even with the airport deployment?
Even with the airport, we're not a kind of thing, but um but the uh, I should back on the moment, some of those decisions. We're we're working it out. For mitigation efforts, there's crews in town that will be working on new month uh property, they're newly built. And they'll be preparing up city to city to bring in some of our uh. Uh firemen here in my company and also on kind of a board, including that rest of that, I don't know if the data opportunity that I've kind of looked for between two billion dollars. Uh I think it was really good down there, you know, you know, I kind of use the community, an idea of what we wish to have supplied. So we're building out two more containers with the training center and just in time for the fire academy, we've started a couple of weeks. So we'll we'll be able to give them additional training, have a training center. And we'll, uh as we know, I don't know if you know this, but we haven't even gotten a break with the college. Uh it pays for some, geez. Um can salary, but also six hundred dollars for consumables for the training facilities, so we're purchasing that totally against this. Uh I'll be writing that, and in fact, it will be due this Friday for additional volume here to twenty thousand. And that's the disease and prevention grant, I'm trying to figure out one of the awards to come out with, get you a grant that's also for ten cents upon here. The amount of thinking that obviously should be here in the next year. There's no update on that, so.
See you spoil my whole evening.
I know, no updates, other than we got back, you know, it was the one on. So they they got finalized, actually. Chief will receive a scholarship uh to go to leadership conference in Keystone, so that's a great city, it's an encouraging budget, and I was good with him. We will see that, and then uh the last thing I'll talk about, we had two extensive operations. In the past week and a half, uh we had a total loss, unfortunately, a really filthy family down in Flint Lakes, uh it was a one point two million dollar trucker. It was fully involved at one thirty one. Um and it was a defensive operation, we used over fifty five thousand gallons of water and uh. Um the positive, I guess, we really want to say in those terms is because of our last season, it didn't get outside of. The origin of the actual fire itself, it were through this fourteen, but uh we were in testing exposure to make sure that they didn't get into the force, but. Uh again, our vision is helping us out this year, you know, one morning, rainstorm is, somebody across the way is camping. That fire, but then you absolutely got to save, so. The other one was today, we just got done, uh it was a four hour operation up on. It had been passed and uh uh it was a rescue mission, uh with the season, so. Um I feel for that as well. So that's all I have, I'm sorry.
Any questions, any questions for the chief? Thank you. Okay, uh next up, we have the street department report. Um Lori, would you like to give it up there?
Sure, I actually have uh good news, we uh completed the interview process uh with two candidates for our. Yes, for a police department supervisor. And um we just met yesterday with the streets um supervisor and one of their staff, and we have agreed. Uh all of us agreed on the final candidate, I'm not gonna tell you who that is yet, because I have a candidate, no. Uh but uh we we do have somebody that we think will be a good fit, we're very excited about that, the timing is going to be good because. Uh we can have several months training, this person trained before um the winter starts and. Person indicated that they're, you know, would like to give their earlier two weeks notice, which we think is fair, but we can get that person in. Soon, because we have, of course, the full setting process coming up, budgeting process set, getting set up and. Uh someday, we're gonna let Jim retire, so uh we'd like to let Jim have the winter retirement, it's just kind of great. There was another um candidate who was uh quite good and we think might uh potentially be a good operator. So what we may end up doing is really offering that person the position as an operator. Uh some of the things, because I really do work ethic, and we'd be a really good fit for our team, so in fact, it's kind of a. A win-win for us to get a supervisor and another operator. But I can't tell you their names just yet, I'm telling the name, I didn't want to say the name for the board of our other leadership, but. Since I'm letting candidates now, probably we can get to announce their names in a public meeting, but that was, that was it. Yesterday morning, I think that's when we ironed that, so what I'm hoping to do is. Uh let's get this know by phone, um but we can get their offer letter to help as well, so that's great news.
Any questions for Lori and the street department?
Very excited to get our son, our parents, uh police staff, I mean, the police department, streets, and. We have a few others that are still under staff, but it feels good to get to a place where you're not asking. Way too much of the abuse there.
I would like to say the street department has been integral in the the planning and implementation of these. Uh events the last two weekends, and again, it'll be out this this next weekend. Um you know, uh and and they have a lot of responsibilities, not only posting ahead of time, but also. Uh you know, uh placing, you know, proper barriers the morning of an event, putting in. In the case of actually putting trucks in place uh last weekend. Uh and then Boon gave tremendous amount of responsibility in terms of trash and and ongoing issues. They they've really done a good job and 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 they've worked very closely. Uh with the organizers of both those events, uh mainly because of Lori, has has pulled everybody together. Uh in these in these meetings and just as, I I I don't know that I call it seamlessly, but pretty close. Okay, uh thank you, at this time, we have the animal shelter report.
You're here there because we actually have an owl now that will uh pick up the root of everybody else's seed.
So we had an increase in adoption since we had so many animals come in in June. Um July twenty fifth, we um had two dangerous dogs that. Were involved in the death of another dog, that's a ongoing case. And then on the twenty seventh of July, we had Denver Don friendly come up. We have a follow-up on Monday the twenty second with um Laurie, the shelter staff, and and Ally from Denver Don friendly. So that is going to be a lot of resources that they're going to bring to us additional rent, et cetera. Um there's another dog incident in the county on August sixth. And that's also a ongoing case, but um that the dog from all the child, um so they may be getting euthanized tomorrow. As you can see from the graph here, thankfully, July, we had a decrease in our animal intake numbers. And then um overall so far through the year, we've had a hundred and twenty five dogs for intake and then thirty seven cats. Those are my main ones for the evening.
Thank you, uh any questions for the animal shelter? Uh have you had any luck with a kennel tech?
You know, we've had successes with some of the partners in uh getting. Staff up, I think the animal shelter has been a little more challenging because the work. Um is not the word in the book, none of the words, I think sometimes people have a misperception of what animal shelter work is. And uh it it can be, it can be difficult, work emotionally difficult, as we mentioned about a. Animal needs to be euthanized, I think some people think they're gonna come in and play with gas and alcohol in time, um they end up. Putting food and tea and sometimes it's not exactly what they thought they were getting into, so we are trying to get to a point um where we. Have our kennel tech children back positions built, they are not. Not, so. We uh Caitlin and I met this morning, we're we're talking about special degrees for that. What we'd like to see is less of all the work, unfortunately, but that's what we should, we we, you know, to be honest with you, one of the, one of the, we forgot she's great. But she got offered a five hundred an hour board to come back from her old job, and so it's that concern that we're raised. But she didn't, that way is something else, how would she actually work one day at least, but. We we love that her full time, we just, we can't, well, we are trying to get that.
Any questions for the animal shelter? Thank you very much. Uh we have legal licensing report, does anybody have any questions on that report? If no questions, uh we can move on, uh the building department report, uh this is supplied to us by the county. Uh just giving us some some basic numbers. Okay, next up, sales tax preparations. Um the numbers continue to roll in our favor. Uh you know, based on this, and and the next five months are, you know, four of the biggest five months in the year for tax collection, so. It's going to be interesting to see where this ends at the end of the year, but uh I I hate to make a projection, but. Donna, you want to make a projection?
I would like to ask somebody.
Please.
Um so we didn't get in um. For the July, what the county says for July two thousand twenty two, which is not on. Chart yet, it was three hundred and sixty eight thousand, so if I add that in, we are actually thirteen thousand dollars over. For the full year, so everything else we get now is just going to, July, it's a thirty percent.
Yes.
Overlast.
And 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 you know, up a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars over budget. Uh it's just, it just, it continues to stagger me. Uh and I understand uh that we really need to be thinking about recession and we really do. But in the meantime, I just revel in these numbers every night.
They're 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 fantastic and and some of the concerns you were having about the cost. Yeah, still increasing some of the other concerns, it 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 it's pretty continued, that's fantastic. And I think there are certain gate demands on the. The things that we are able to do now as a city that we weren't able to do before, because we have that money, we are. Hiring for key positions, we just want to be. They don't ever want to be in a position where we built everything finally, and then we have to figure out how to. And just with the other city, so it's the number here are fantastic.
Uh next up, financials.
So um. I first want to uh say that, because Tim had um Hill had asked about this at one time, I have. Submitted for the first half of the year of the city administrator wages. For grants, so hopefully we'll get that reimbursed fairly soon, it was in the amount of twenty nine thousand dollars, some change. Um the other thing I would like to talk about is the reserve, so I did some kind of. Some rough calculations, and I know it's always a moving target, but in this financial statement, it said it's three point four. Um but we need to, we received revenue from the A R P, but we haven't expended it at all. Expensed out completely, so we have an expense out five hundred and fifty four thousand. So we'd have to reduce it by that, but then we still have many coming in from the timber hopper house. Of about five hundred and twenty five dollars, that's kind of a lot there. Brings us back up to three point four, but then I want to bring in that the three hundred and sixty eight thousand and the two hundred and sixty nine is not in this. Financial financial statement grows to six hundred and thirty eight thousand, which. Seems like it should be at four million, so I think that's a pretty good number.
You know, I have to, I have to tell you guys, when when I first became mayor. You know, thi- this is, this is like a different universe.
Yeah.
From from six and a half years ago, uh than, it it just is. Um frankly, we are so lucky. To be managing in a time of prosperity.
That I started.
Yeah.
You were like, oh my gosh, we have two thousand dollars in contingency. We can finally give something to like people coming.
It was true.
Yeah.
We were sold in the fact that we had, it was wasn't negative, so.
Yeah. And then I just did a quick analysis of something like the mayor does, but I went a little bit further, so. I separated out the issue department by wages only, not not the benefit part, you know, which is health insurance, you know, always got to be active. So I come up with the um the police department that wages is fifty seven percent. Their operating expenses, base expenditures are eighty six percent. Um with the street department, their actual wages is fifty two percent, their operational is fifty eight percent.
Keep in mind, we're fifteen point three percent of the year in these reports, so.
Um animal shelter, the wages is fifty three percent, the operational is forty nine percent. And the fire department is. Wages is fifty nine percent and their operational is forty seven percent.
So that's an interesting approach.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We know a lot of police department operational percent. Well, we have one big item is their uh E force. Nobody took into account of the extra expense of, you know, E E citations and then. So the licensing price were in almost double. But I know it took that into account, and now, of course, other things, they're unified and.
You you know, in a in a time of transition, we get hit with a lot of expenses, uh physicals and. And psych evaluations and a lot of things like that, but I will also say the C force thing was, I don't think it was anybody's fault. I don't think E force ever told us that that it one, one software was not adequate, we had to have a second software. In order for to be able to to write the tickets. You know, it was, it was just weird, and that was a few minutes. It was, it was sixty eight hundred dollars or something.
Yeah.
Good. Any questions on the financial? I I would would say relative to your reserve, I also look at that and say, well, we're probably gonna spend the uh the paving budget down. To in its entirety this year, um and that that's a lucky, you know, if we have enough money in there, so. If we have enough money in there. So um, just it's always a movie target. You never know what what it actually is. Okay. Okay, next up, our favorite thing, the bills. I don't think I've seen this many pages of bills. Anybody have any questions or line items? I'm sorry, question.
No, bringing together two topics, paying bills and wire accounts first. Do we actually pay anybody by wire? So that's. Right. Uh, that's a good question.
Even in the real estate transaction, we we did a check, didn't do a wire transfer at all.
We do A C H. Yeah, but I do, I have signed up with um, Community Based Support. It's called Positive Aid, which is a private venture. So they contact me anytime someone's trying to take money out of. Doesn't matter how much it is. I have to actually tell them that I wrote these checks. I've done this. You know, this is going to be coming out of the account. If I hadn't told them, they contacted.
It I I would like to ask in terms of, you know, I'm sure this came up about the cybersecurity insurance during the audit. Had we run that by Sursa at all?
You know, I, when I was doing that for New Hope this year, I've seen that on there and I. Thought about asking that. I did not.
Okay.
But it is something I know.
We can do it in the top. Okay, thank you. I've looked these over, but I had no idea steel chainsaws were so expensive.
Yes.
Well, they bought two, so one of yours. I'm ready for data.
I'm ready.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just just make them.
Okay, good deal. Um, any other questions or or uh, concerns about the bills? Uh, then I would impitate a motion to repay the bills, please.
Just seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. You can say those girls, my child. Um, next up, we have um. We want to schedule budget work sessions. Donna's come up with a schedule. Uh, for that, we just want to check and see if this works for everybody. Uh, but the first session, which will be kind of our. Our uh, revenue projection session and any capital requests. We want to prioritize will be on September the twenty-seventh. But then uh, the scast and furious. Uh, for the next six weeks.
Just letting off, probably will not.
I I don't think I'll be available on ten eleven.
Okay.
Um, I will be out of town between the eighth and the fifteenth, but if there's a zoom.
There will always be a zoom option. If we have a forum, we feel okay about it.
I'll also be done.
So we've got three people who will be missing on the eleventh.
Eleven eight is watching that.
Oh.
No, we don't.
No, we we don't. I didn't know that was watching that.
I I mean, can be a field. Did you say that there were three out to eleven?
That's what's looking like that now.
I mean, can be available online.
Online?
I potentially will be back, but.
Okay, we'll leave the eleventh in place. We have to, we will, we will, we won't.
Okay.
We're about what we absolutely have to, but anybody who can participate wants to. Um, so.
I'm going to pull one for New Zealand from the beach.
You know, as long as the umbrella doesn't poke in the eye, you want to be.
My dog from an umbrella.
Look at that, Max.
Little.
You got.
A little brick umbrella?
Yeah, a beach umbrella.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Max, go ahead.
The mayor um, ma'am, make a suggestion about the budget. If there's any way that we can make it so. When we re- review it, budget is quite a, and the reason why I'm asking is budget is. Is long, takes a long time. So if there's a way to. Make it so we're discussing the. The the discretionary dollars, right? And not the the expenses that we know we're going to have. I I know that Donna does a great job in it, but there's so many line items. I just. Sometimes wonder what we're supposed to discuss in budget and what we're not supposed to discuss in budget. Uh, and so once again, I I know we have. Um, off the top expenses that are, there's just no negotiation. We have to pay them. And then there's the discretionary funding. Um, and one thing, so so that that said. Um, we also get a lot of requests from certain. Uh, departments and I'd hope that they, if we could also. Um, give them the leaders intent that we want them to give us what they're going to ask for for the fiscal year without asking for. Example, a million and a half dollar piece of equipment halfway through the year. So I I don't know how we can do that, but um. I think we can.
Well, I would say in the past, I don't know if Lori cut in here in a second. She's going to run the budget this year. Uh, but I would say this, in the past, we've given, uh, after we, after the twenty-seven, then we have an idea, okay, here's how much. The overall budget can be. And so then we can present to each department, okay, here's how much you have budgeted, which is the way we've done it for the last seven years. And once they know that, then they bring us a budget that meets that requirement. Now, can we? Keep from having some sort of an expense mid-year, you know, it it the only reason that would happen is because we don't. It's an unanticipated uh, issue. In the case of the type one fire engine, it was a deal that we didn't want to pass up. I mean, those things, those things may and will happen. Uh, but I would say it's up to the department managers to bring us an intelligent budget that's based on the projection for revenue. Uh, and then we, each year, I don't think we've actually gotten into diving into every single line item. Uh, you can, but most of them are are pretty perfunctory. You just, you just go through them and you understand that that those are not. As you you put it, they're not discretionary. I mean, they're absolute. So um. I think that I'd like the Lord to top of the budget because she thinks it's going to go much more quickly this year.
I I that's my hope. So I, what I wanted to do is have each of the meetings that are scheduled, have each department and make a presentation. We are not going over the budget line by line. That's a waste of everyone's time. What I'd like to do is a high-level presentation from each of the departments about, you know, priorities and. How that actually ties back to the goal we just agreed upon in the previous month. And then I, what I'd like to do is just. High level and maybe open up the questions. I I don't think there's any merit to. Having every single line item. Okay, so the office plus. Okay, you know, I I you know, description, are you okay with two hundred? It's ridiculous. That is not a good use of this group of people's time. Uh, and as far as unexpected, you know, as far as expenditure, there's no way we can guarantee there wouldn't be things that come up in mid-year. And the whole purpose of the budget is to plan as best we can for the things that we can anticipate and try and figure out how. And what we want to prioritize spending our money on. Um, I you know, we have a procurement process of things happen in mid-year that we follow. It's easier for staff and for the city and in the budget, frankly. Um, the procurement process, i- it's so much easier. You all approved it in the budget, you can just go ahead and. You know, make expenditure rather than coming back to you like we did with type one where we have several meetings to approve that. If you've already approved that expenditure, it's much easier. So it's in our interest and your interest to anticipate things, which is we will, we won't always be able to do that.
Even if we don't go over line item by line item, we'll still get a line item by another copy, right?
And that's exactly why you will have that. So you can ask your questions. But yeah, if you have a question on the line, of course, you will be able to see that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's pretty much the process we've had. I like your idea of of approaching it from a higher level. Um. You know, proposition from from that department manager rather than than, you know, diving into the the particulars.
Right, all that preparation happens. Theoretically, we want that to happen before the council meetings. We're not doing that kind of. The level of detail hacking it out. And what do you think about this? What do you think about that? That that? All that department head work should be done in advance to present it to you. In their budget and then they should have a high-level description of what maybe the big changes are from one year to the next. And some highlights and then open up the questions.
And I know we're trying to get away from paper, but I really like the budget on paper because they're all over it.
You can have paper.
Thank you.
It may come to you electronically, but I understand that some, I have the same ways. Sometimes you just have to have.
Thank you.
It comes out of the budget, but.
Yeah.
Um, let's discuss November the eighth. Um, do we have a proposal? Should we do it? Uh, the day before, the day after, the day after will also be, um, but I'm mistaken, mistaken. Um, playing in zone does a second. And and fourth Wednesdays. So we would be uncomfortable playing. So I don't know if that's a big problem. I mean, I cannot pretend playing in zone. And that's only one person out there. Uh, they're totally. Would the ninth be okay with everybody? What's that?
Virtually, they have been meeting virtually.
Oh, virtually.
Uh, I'm open to the night.
Okay. Backs, what do you think?
It's going to be. I'll be there. Either online.
Thank you.
So much enthusiasm.
Yeah. Alright, so that's really the only change to this. Uh, you know, uh, the eleventh of October could be a game time decision if we if it looks. Like we're not gonna not gonna have a forum, but we'll we'll work that out as we get closer. Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
Make those changes and get it posted in my paper.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we have the Tabor Opera House quarterly update. Miss Day, thank you for your patience.
Good counsel and the counsel for having us. I also have some more members with me as well, Amy Tate. As our secretary of the observation board and our chief executive. We'll each kind of take a couple pieces of our report. We just wanted to, you know, engage with the council. We committed to doing quarterly reports extended that time. I was here in May and boy, the summer has just flown by. Hard to believe that we are planning for winter and budgets. Uh, so we just kind of wanted to just give a little bit of a touch point to you all and also. We want to tee up and offer, I think it's been offered in the past, we would love to offer tours to the council. And also H B B and staff to be able to kind of get the lay of the land and experience the cheaper from a different lens, which would be, you know. Not so much of a guided tour with our dozens, but maybe with staff and be able to see all the hicks and crannies of the tier. So I will send that out to staff and see if there's willingness to set something up and you can understand if we need to. Host that or whether we need to do that. I think last year, two council members were able to attend. Uh, we have our seasonal final finale, if you will, on August twenty-seventh, uh, which is Caleb Miller and Cory Warren. A not to be missed event. Hopefully you all have had your tickets. So we'll come out. Uh, we are expecting our biggest crowd of the season so far and that's uh, next Saturday, the twenty-seventh. Uh, and then we'll be working with the city on a couple of other events. Uh, we have September third coming up, which will be a really fun event. On the Dale Down Band and Jay Riley will be performing and we are selling tickets actively on the website currently pushing out. I think the message. So I think the good thing about a small town is we just let everybody know what's happening. Please invite friends and family. We're also giving tours. Uh, we're, it's been quite a while since we've done tours in September. And it's something that the foundation wants you to stash here and budget to for. So we will be operating tours all the way through the end of September. Our last day will be right before the Main Street line auction, which returns to the Tupper stage on October first. So if you haven't been able to experience that tour and tell friends and family, we'd love to have them through. And uh, through August, it'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, and then in September, we'll rock off. This will begin this Friday. Uh, we also wanted to hopefully kind of shout out about the ghost sign being completed, which has had a lot of enthusiasm. And and crowd support that we'll watch and see it. And Donna will be happy to know that we got our last bill, so we'll be able to submit that to people. And that and then getting our final placement interior with our um, partner at uh. The Colorado History Foundation that have our easement in place. Those two pieces are the final piece to be able to submit for the. American Standard's brand reimbursement and close out Jolo for phase one. So we are very close to closing out phase one grants with the city. And I will be working on those here uh, through the end of the fall and hopefully get those money back into the copper of the city. And I. Um, so the next thing that we're working on is a business plan launch. Um, so we've hired um, theater projects team. Strategic planners. I have a look at that because that would not be red. Um, and part of that is a survey. Is that we want to get out to the community and start getting some feedback. So this Q R code, you wouldn't mind. Um, you know, scaling it and sharing it or if you're more comfortable, you know, just typing that in. But share it far and wide with um, anybody that is stakeholder and stakeholder in which people that live here. Um, so we're going to have that going on for the next six weeks. I'll be done interviews for some key folks. Um, on the week of September twelve, but we're going to keep this going with the community dinner. That that Friday. So um, hopefully they will get some information too, but we'd appreciate your help. We'll have that out. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just here to speak a little bit about the care and stewardship of our historic scenery collection. Uh, certainly it poses a lot of challenges for the opera house for, as it is, was discovered a couple of years ago. Then we have this fantastic collection, this historic scenery. How we care for it, what we do with it going forward. Continues to be on our plate every time we, and we just have yet to come up with a final solution with what we do with it. However, since plans changed this summer with regards to uh, going forward with the outside rehabilitation efforts. And switching from what we had hoped to do, which was the whole entire roadside building, switching to the east side of the building. We were forced to come up with a solution to take care of that scenery collection and protect it while the work was being done on the inside of the building. A very wonderful volunteer from Denver, Mr. Alan Trumbler and I. Uh, put together a plan. Alan actually designed it and drew it up. We constructed a series of four platforms that. We along with the crew, hoisted twenty-five feet in the back of the. In the back of the auditorium and settled just above the scenery and then draped a lot of reinforced plastics covered. This is what has protected the scenery during this construction period. It's proven to work. Uh, certainly as we have found with the reconstruction project on the east side of the building, the upper portions. Have to be entirely rebuilt. Uh, the top four feet of the building is nothing but sand. And bricks, the mortar was completely deteriorating. And so we basically rebuilding the top four feet of the wall. And in doing so, there are going to be some pieces that fall. And this protection system that we put up has done what it was intended to do. And continues to protect the scenery going forward. And until we get a final solution to what we do with the scenery. Uh, this will protect it in the meantime.
Thank you, Carl. So to wrap you though, we really have been full lunge into phase two rehab. We've received the syndicated historic tax credits, both set of them for three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. To go into the phase two, which is phenomenal with the partnership that we had with the city to facilitate the funding of phase one. Going through the city and then back into the foundation in order to be eligible for those omitted historic tax credits, which is fantastic. But as Carl mentioned, we continue to see a lot of challenges. The sewwell in particular was way more deteriorated than we expected. Uh, as they uncovered those bricks and the top part being a hundred percent rebuild, they also realized that a lot of the um, components that. Facilitate the historic grid, which is in and of itself, its own interesting engineering. Uh, has a lot of bronze pieces. And so now is the time to be able to fix those. So we've already gone forward with the state historic fund to dip into some contingency on this particular part of the project. Uh, you know, we still are well within our budget, but just kind of flagging that this particular section of the Tabor Opera House. Were in much more critical disrepair and deferred maintenance than initially expected. We will also be reengaging our neighbors lifetime fitness, uh, when they get through their season here in September. So we can start to plan an engineered solution for scaffolding in order for us to tackle the north wall at um, this next coming summer season. Which was the pitch that we had to do this year. We did get an easement in place for this year's season, but had to kind of. Fall for a bit, the back part of the north wall that comes up to their building and not be on that. Um, so we are planning that out and working closely with our contractors who are phenomenal and excellent and come up every two weeks. If there's ever any interest from anyone on the council, feel free to reach out and would love to have you join one of those construction meetings. They're very informative. And it's very interesting. Uh, but we do feel like we are really making things happen. And once this project is complete, we can feel confident that we've secured the walls and the roof to really be in a good shape. So we can strategically plan for the interior rehab, which is going to be quite a bit more complicated and complex way. But we are excited to take on the challenge. Can we just thank you all as being phenomenal partners to this project? We could not do it without your support. Uh, really, that's just the truth. And the same is for volunteers. That's the backbone of the Tabor Opera House. But we really are excited to be offering programming again and really being acceptable to the public and we hope to continue to move that in the long view through years. So we look forward to continuing to partner with you on this phenomenal place and this great project. If there's any questions, happy to. Respond to them. Otherwise, I look forward to inviting you all for our tour and engaging you in future conversations in the near future.
Do we have any questions for anybody on the board? I I do have a question. It's concern. You know, uh, we know that uh, from what we've learned. That the the scenery collection that exists inside the table is one of the three greatest scenery collections in the world. Um, first question is, do we have, has a a a value been established on that collection?
The value being kind of drawn right now is three and a half million dollars, but that's rather subjective and the point of it. Rather priceless and irreplaceable. Uh, so we do need to do some intense strategic planning with the board. Which we are doing this fall. So we're doing kind of the three legs of the school. We launched the business plan, which we've had a generous donor. Uh, donate their funds in order to do that. So we're leveraging for our summer campaign uh, that will go out for the next couple of weeks. Uh, we will also be reengaging the board for strategic planning for the board because that's been inspired since twenty twenty one. And then the third thing of the school will be kind of a feasibility study to do a capital campaign. The business plan, the strategic term and the capital campaign all have to deal with the elephant on the stage, which happened to be the scenery. And really kind of have those conversations with the board of what is the best next steps. And there's been all kinds of different ideas talked about, uh, at the least of which is finding a whole other building or space to house them. Where they currently are is not going to cover it for the duration. And this temporary construction solution that Carl and our volunteers created and then installed is great for this construction season, but it's not. To be all and also has been very limited. We also kind of have an obligation to maybe figure out what's best way to be stewards to showcase it. And we, you know, had this great news article, you know, written in front of the New York Times. They have not listed the type of donors that we thought that it might. But that doesn't mean that it's dead. We need to just resurrect that and really leverage those conversations to acknowledge what we've had. I call it, it's kind of been sort of popping up in its tomb on the dirt and a half floor. And the, you know, water stayed out, which is in our favor in the air climate. So, yes, that is one of our biggest issues. That we still have to explore and figure out how to be the steward, where it means to live and what are the next steps to secure and to cure it.
Any questions for the stay or the board?
Alright.
At this time, we have our city administrative report.
So uh, what I like to first talk about is uh, the success of the events that we have. So we had boom days. Uh, we have had internal P groups after both of those events to see how things went. Uh, the, we agreed with the P tour on uh, proper, that actually worked quite well. So the back was that that was a success. Uh, the P group we had on Monday and uh, we had an internal one on Tuesday regarding level one hundred, mountain bike race and. By all accounts, uh, everyone really feels like that was a, was very successful, probably one of the most uh, successful ones yet as far as. Logistics and operations. Uh, I think they, they, there was some feedback about things that could be improved, but nothing in particular with the city. Leaving to a group named our police department, uh, our police department did a fantastic job. And uh, yeah, folks, literally that was their first day of work, starting from cruise down. Gradually, the Brian started, maybe even started working on it, but it didn't break. Um, we think it went very successfully. Uh, we just had a. Meeting this morning to talk about plans for uh, this weekend's race and they've been really helpful to have internal meetings. So the police department and the streets department, uh, make sure everybody knew whether we need to win and we pass some excellent meetings with the. Town and the race director. I think our takeaway of all of this is uh, all of us being new, meeting new. Uh, kind of management being new, town being new. There's a lot of conversations that we all wish we would have in January, which next year we will have in January. But maybe they happen two days before the race, but I tell them every day it's a play. As long as everything's fine and running good, it doesn't matter what chaos is happening. Um, you know, I've heard, but I, again, I think everybody's really happy with how those events went and I want to thank the city departments that. And, you know, for putting this all together. Um, last night, the county had an O H D town hall meeting. Which I thought was extremely well attended. Uh, I was really impressed with the number of uh, people who came out to listen. Uh, and who came out to very respectfully share their uh, comments about how they feel about O H D within our community. I think it's a really, really important issue to address. The point at the town hall, I think in large parts, talk about counties potential. Um, change to their O H D ordinance. Uh, I thank the county for including the city because um, in the presentation I made, I I weren't going to include the cities. This, the threat of restraint that O H D plays on the city or let me down on those which counties. Um, noise, safety and traffic slash congestion are the issues that the city faces. We don't have land. Really, that anybody can be recreating on the A T V. That's a different issue with counties. Uh, so I think coming out of the whole comments, I think uh, wherever noise being a big concern. Safety being a big concern. Uh, to address the noise issues that the mayor and I talked to, I would like to um, I would like to. We don't have noise workers. I would like to get that going. I would actually like to uh, hire an expert who can help us. On grass experience drafting other noise monitors, get us the noise workers. Uh, we can't enforce something we don't have. When you get to safety, I think we have tools we can use. We have twenty five mile an hour speed limit. Safety, um, you know, seatbelt are required. Children under sixteen can't be operating the the vehicles. Those are things we just are organized and now we have voice back, we can work on those. So that's noise and that's uh, safety, traffic and congestion, uh, the mayor and I talked about. Now, we currently have two A T V businesses licensed within city limits. We don't, you, we all go look and see, we see two businesses operating. What I wanted to know was how many, how many are licensed that. Maybe Norman or someone who's gotten a license, you can fill later. We'll answer. Uh, so the question is, should we put a moratorium on that? Uh, and what if we put a moratorium on uh, rental businesses? So that's something I think we want to bring to you all for a discussion at some point, because I do think those are issues that we need to discuss. But the, the noise one is not just the noise, they even the issue of that's, you know, my neighbor's music is loud. That's. Um, I would like us to have a permitting system for, for music. If someone wants to have, you know, private event, have an event. Private business, you know, what do we do about that? The traditional user, that seems to be silly. So that, um, those are some things that we came out of that meeting for the city's perspective. Uh, we're working on the accommodations tax. Our deputy city clerk and my director are working to make sure that we are collecting. The appropriate accommodations tax. So I wanted to ask a question before I would say we're working on that. Also want to name our deputy city clerk. She knows her in the same business licenses that have gone over and um. The list of businesses we have renewed and have contacted them, which is a business that's going to have a license that should. This is the kind of stuff that we weren't actually able to do when we were under. This is the kind of stuff that was falling through the cracks. Where we, we actually didn't have the staff to do this. So grateful that we do. And speaking of staff. I can give you a name. We have a new planning director starting on the twenty second. Chayton Machance. Is coming from wherever he may be. She would be very excited about that. Uh, he is, I mean, great. He has a uh. Master degree in planning and seven years of experience in a similar community. And we can't be more excited at least. His inbox is already full of things that we'd like him to get speeded on, but but primary things, I think. Um, Kennedy Justice Center. We, we need somebody to be attending those meetings on how city actually stands all the words and acting things, because we don't. Uh, and uh, we've got a, a petition for three hundred Tom Star Street, which has been delayed for. Various reasons for a long time, we need to get that out and also on the real estate. So those are some, there were also, that lacking a lot of smaller projects, but those are the biggest. Eight oh nine spurts. I wanted to give an update on that. Um, you know, our city attorney, we've had a million I G As that have been a crisis that we needed to review right now. So we've been certain deadlines, kids that overwhelmed, but um, we are making a prayer to get um, this U P in place and the documents we need in place. To get the C U P for traditional use permit for eight oh nine spurts. So just so you all know, we, we're making that a prayer for her on her work right now. Um, that is the, but one last thing I wanted to share with you because. Uh, I, we, we had touched on it there. I brought his favorite typo. I have to share with you my favorite typo ever. So when I was practicing law, uh, that there was a judge who asked all parties if they would agree to go through basically a settlement conference, which is called mediation. So we all needed to submit a document that said we would agree to go to mediation or not. And the opposing counsel in the parties, uh, basically his title was, he, he wrote that he agreed to medication. That's, that's amazing. That makes so much sense. So that's actually my favorite. That is my favorite thing. Um, so with that, I.
Thank you. That was prior autocorrect. Which is the worst invention ever. So, do anybody have any questions? Please.
Um, regarding the O H D. And I've mentioned those before, but it hasn't happened. I look on East Seventh Street where people come down from the student house. And we really need a street women's sign with, you're going too fast.
They have that radar trailer that we're moving around town, but I will ask the chief to put it up on. Up on uh, East Seven, because you, you know, I know that you're right.
Yeah, some of the layers on this one as well towards the stop sign.
Right.
The amount of times who will go past that stop sign because they're going too fast to stop.
At one time, we had police officers stationed there and they were giving multiple tickets to that. People just blow right through the stop sign.
And that's definitely not the commercial operators from private. And the, the second thing I have to be exacting at time listening to the town hall. Is I would like to do a moratorium on rentals, not guided. Uh, rental where people can just rent a dog or.
Uh, we would like to do both. And I will tell you, and I talked to the, to Lori about this. I would like for us to, to in ordinance allow the number of guided businesses that exist now. But we have to, we have to do the moratorium first. We have time to consider that. And I would like in ordinance to not allow rentals. I think rentals are problematic in terms of of the issues that they can cause. Uh, that's my opinion. We'll see, we'll see where we go with it, but I agree.
I wanted to tell you, thank you for sending the information about the, the signs. You sent it in a separate email. Uh, the sandwich board signs.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, yes, thank you. Yes. Well, and we need to, we, we need to schedule some time to discuss that. Thank you for reminding me about that. So we will, we have a lot in our place, but yes, I think we need a discussion about the same four signs first.
Any other questions for Lori? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, it's eight oh five. Uh, we're going to take a five minute break. Uh, and then uh, the next thing on the agenda will be uh, certificate of appropriateness. Start the witches. One long day.
Max, have you been able to hear everybody? Okay?
I can hear everybody just perfectly.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The owl is awesome.
Good.
It's not a sound, but, but it can even just run out of. And it was all. In certain, you know, big people. Really, really. When it's inside, you even see it. Sure. Just. These are the nice little. The business. That this is. Yes, yes. Then I just. Remember, this is probably all three people. It's just a little bit of a case in this. The way I'm going to go. So this may. At the next.
Yeah.
How this. Yes. Right then. Well, that could, they didn't.
And then you were all. And, uh, can you?
Yeah.
There you do.
And do you send the loan off?
We're leaving this weekend. Going to college to saints in the last hand, Delu.
I'm sure that's fine.
Yeah.
You're gonna run the ski.
Got a box of plants.
You know, I'm doing okay until somebody asks me if I'm doing okay.
Judy goes off on Thursday.
Oh, my God. That's violent.
We didn't.
Probably be.
I wonder.
You look at the accessible website.
It's not.
And you look at the city code, we have. That shows our property. And it's. Good one.
Yeah.
Lots.
I don't know. I think you saw that Henry saw at the graduate. And. Just looked at them and. It's gonna be a disaster. I mean, like right now, they're just. Yeah.
I have no issue with this property over. Um, if it, the problem is.
There's a time where you gotta.
I can try to reflect on me like we need to walk. I drove myself to the airport and I did not look. Trying to allow.
Right.
So there's maybe. Where is my face? Yeah, I was small pieces of very instructive here. Spread out. And we that there are a lot of them. Uh, sixteen years.
Once I thought. He was fine. I'd say, well, they're going to build a building that's now wrestling. He didn't know what this is, but it was. Uh, but nonetheless, it's in the building that's green. That's not what he wanted.
All right. I'm.
Yeah. And I will call games they played. I'll call my money. We're walking together. Um, but it, it really does.
Have.
He's.
I saw that.
He's not. I won't.
Then you don't even have a chance to do. You don't have a chance to. Call me right now. And then for the.
But also. During that time, I wanted to set it here because I wanted to see. Now the city, I wanted to take a picture of William before we get out of there, but I couldn't give you that. So I'm getting what I'm wanting. It's not, I'm not getting.
Well.
Uh.
Don't get that picture.
But I hope so.
Five minutes, people.
But I wanted to send them to all the people in, uh, Alans, you know. So.
Max is calling us to order.
Uh, yeah.
Order.
Um, it is eight twelve and we will reconvene the city council meeting. Uh, the next thing on our agenda, uh, is a certificate of authenticity, uh, cer- certificate of appropriateness. Um, and this is for nine thirty M law. Uh, and the certificate of appropriateness, uh, has been resubmitted. This has been, if you'll. Nancy, Nancy. Um. So I've tried to remember, i- is this certificate of appropriateness, uh, a public area?
Yes, I believe it is. And I do believe I forgot your script. Um, my main question is I, I can't see who all is there. I'm sorry. This is Lori Ty and City. Anyway, I was trying to see if any of the applicants were there or via Zoom or in person.
I. I see, uh, Tim Bourbon, Ron Bertolos, Jackie Willoughby, you and, uh, Max Vergenti. Uh, so no, uh, the applicant is not present.
Then you may do as council sees fit. I, I don't know what you want me to do. If you want me to present, I can try. There's no point.
I think you. You should present. It's been in front of, uh, historic reservation mission a couple of times. Uh, they have approved this and I can explain as I think you can, why they have finally approved it. Um, so if you would go ahead and, and tell us, explain to city council, uh, the processes that this has gone through and where we are now.
Okay. Thank you. Um, actually this was first before the H P C on, uh, June fourteenth. Originally, and it was denied by the H P C and sent to city council, recommended to city council to deny. But the applicant withdrew. If you will remember, the applicant withdrew because they presented, uh, new designs to city council. That they had not yet presented to the H P C. So they withdrew their app. Page and so that it wouldn't be denied. Um, then they resubmitted and I had to do another round of public notifications. So it went back before the H P C on July twenty sixth. And at that time, the H P C. And the applicant kind of jointly decided to continue it because the H P C gave the applicant specific. Uh, recommendations to change and do that. So, um. We can, then the continued resubmitted C O A was heard by the H P C on August ninth. And the applicant had, um, incorporated all of the recommendations that's the H P C. Um, gave them. So they were definitely working with the H P C and the H P C at that point on August ninth. Approved to recommend to city council that, uh, you approve the C O A. I can go into the specifics of what the H P C asked for and got if you would like, but that's the gist of everything.
Uh, thank you. And I think that's, that's a very well recapped. Uh, and I was intended, a- as was, um, Bailey. Um, would you like to share any information, uh, relative to the H P C's consideration of this?
Yeah, sure. Um, I was intended to vote, meaning by a alternate commissioner for H P C, so I actually, um, have an official vote. Um, this last time, but, um, I do know that, um, there were concerns just based on, uh, the overall line. Um, I know that they did. Uh, he, some of the input and feedback that the H P C, um, provided. Um, I was in support of these staff, final staff recommendations, um, of not serving. Um, but I finally. Heard about the alternative and the whole time doing, and that was about a time. Um, and. I would be interested to have pretty careful and but, um, see the days behind this project.
But currently, if I'm wrong, the, the, this latest recommendation was to approve by the H P C, not, not approve. Okay. Got it. Thank you. Um, I would say, a- as I observed this, the H P C asked for some changes. One of them was the roof pitch. From three twelve to six twelve. The other was to change a gabled front. Of that roof, uh, to a solid front that would allow, uh, fishtail or other Victorian. Uh, issues. The other, and, and another was that they wanted a front door. It's only had a side door and they said traditionally it has to have a front door. And, uh, and I think it was a fourth. Uh, Lori, do you remember what the fourth ask was?
Yes, it was a six inch lap sighting.
Oh, got it. Yes, thank you.
And then also, I'm sorry. They also requested that windows, the, the sizes of the windows, there were too many different sizes and shapes. And they did reduce those windows down and made them more like the other buildings in the area.
So I guess in summation, uh, the applicant came back and, and. Made all the changes that were requested by the H P C, in which case the H P C said, then we feel like it meets. The requirements of the National Historic Overland District. And they recommended approval. So that's where we are right now. Um, because we don't have the applicant here to speak to us. I would open, uh, the public hearing portion of this public meeting.
I don't know if we have, the, I was looking at the agenda.
I understand, but I believe that this is a public hearing. Uh, you know, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the process, uh, kind of a shortened process, but. At this time, I'm going to open the public input portion of the public hearing. And, uh, I would ask if there's anybody in the public who would like to comment on this application, uh, either for or against. Um, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to, to comment on, on this, uh, certificate of appropriateness?
I would just, if I may, I would just like to ask that the two, um, additional papers, uh, letters that I gave you guys or gave council for this evening. Be read or put into the record as they were the only two that were, um, given to me before tonight's meeting.
Are we, were we talking about the, the design features, the internal design features? Oh, I see.
Okay. That's actually a letter and not a design feature. That is not something from.
It's in protest.
Okay. So noted. If everybody's had a chance to read it, you know. Is there anybody in, uh, city council chambers who would like to, to, uh, speak, uh, either in favor of or in opposition to, uh, this certificate?
I would like to continue this until we have an applicant here who can ask questions.
No, this is good.
Uncomfortable having someone here, especially receiving letters of against it. I'm uncomfortable. Proceeding without them to answer some of the concerns.
Then we can simplify this. I would entertain a motion, uh, for continuation, uh, to a date certain. Um, and that would probably be September the sixth.
Or at some most to continue. The, um. Consideration of the recent certificate of appropriateness for nine thirty M law to a date certain of September sixth.
Uh, is a point of clarification. Does that give us enough time, uh, Lori, for, uh, posting of this for, uh? Reschedule the public hearing?
I don't know that I have to repost it be- because it was posted for tonight. You could continue it for the next one. I, I will check on that. But I don't think I have to repost it for the continuation.
If you would check tomorrow, I would appreciate it and see if it has to be reposted. Thank you.
And just a point of verification, Lori, was the applicant, applicant was made aware of this, uh? City that it was going to be on this next meeting agenda?
Absolutely, absolutely. I forwarded him this meeting and they were at the previous one. So they know how it works. I, I. Yes, they were notified. Sorry.
Never actually attended any of those in, in person. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. And that has been a problem.
I think that was a concern of the H P C, even though they did recommend for approval. They were really struggling with the idea that, that, that the, um. The, the owner never showed up.
Correct.
Except they were on Zoom. Sorry. Never in person. We have a motion on the floor. Uh, do I have a second?
Three seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rithson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lingo that?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yeah.
Councilmember for Jennifer?
Yes.
Mayor for Thundery?
Yes.
Mary-Lynne?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'm next up. At this time, we have a discussion, debate and selection of city council appointees. For the regional housing authority. I would practice by saying the county selected their two appointees today. One was Commissioner Mudge and the other was their, uh, county administrator, uh, Tim Burton. And so that, that's how they decided to proceed in terms of, of the two people who would represent the county on the, uh. On the, the housing authority board. Uh, we are met with the same task, pick two people. Uh, one of them does need to be an elected official. The other does not necessarily have to be an elected official. Um, and I'd like to hear from city council about how they would like to proceed with the selection process and. I'm sorry, what's that? Tim, uh, do you have a comment?
Um, yes, if I could just have a moment of privilege and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for. Um, letting city council know who the Board of County Commissioners chose. Um, you were spot on. It was Commissioner Mudge was chosen to serve, uh, uh, for the rest of her term as county commissioner. And then myself to serve on the board, um, until January thirty first, twenty twenty four. Um, but I'd also like to let council know that the Board of County Commissioners would like to have a work session, potentially a joint work session with city council. On discussion of the at-large board members. As you should all be aware, we are currently. Uh, accepting applications for the at-large, uh, board members for the regional housing authority. Um, and you know, the county, the county commissioners, um, have an intent and wanted to be known that they do. They would like to see a diverse board for this regional housing authority, including people who have lived experience with our housing crisis. And also, uh, members of, um, our minority community who have, you know, previously been excluded or not, um. Been participants in boards of, um, boards with this kind of purview within our community. And that's, um, that's all. But I can answer any questions if, uh, city council has any for the county.
Any questions for Tim regarding the counties?
I thought the agreement was that the. Four members of the regional housing authority would pick a three at-large members.
That is how it's written. That's correct.
I think that's.
Yes, you are.
For the joint session.
Why did you need to meet?
Uh, with the board. Oh, sorry. Um, thank you, uh, council member Laritzen. Uh, the board just wanted to. Have an opportunity to discuss with city council, um. For your two representatives and our two representatives to, uh, discuss the at-board, uh, membership and pass along any, um. You know, recommendations or advice that the respective, uh, elected boards might have. But you are, you are right that, um, the four, the four appointed today will appoint the at-large members. Uh, the B O C C just thought it might be pertinent for all electeds to be able to, um. Way in on the selection of the at-large members via their, uh, proxies, for lack of a better term.
I, I have to admit, I had, I had the same thought Tracy did. I understand we'll, we can get together and talk about it. Ultimately, it has to be the decision of those four people, um, where we may have a conversation and make recommendations, they have to decide. Uh, so, uh, like, you know, I have mixed feelings about it, but, uh, I'm buying with it, with the joint meeting. Any other thoughts on that?
I guess alongside with Tracy, I don't know why we would necessarily need a joint meeting, but I'm not opposed.
I, I kind of feel the same way. Yeah, I agree. Um. At this time, I would say four people. At this time, I would say four people have raised their hand in city council. And, uh, I've raised mine. Uh, Shannon has raised her, Kim raised hers and Christian has raised hers. Um, so we have four people who have expressed interest. In, in, in being one of those, one of the two people, uh, on the housing authority board. Um, I would say that both Christian and Shannon have also, uh, put in letters of interest, uh, for the at-large positions. And I, there may have been some confusion, maybe they need, needed those letters, uh, for the, for the selection of those two people. I don't believe that's the case, but either way, um.
No, I, I put it in because I was interested in, in, in either capacity.
Either capacity. Good. Thank you.
And I put it in because I asked Jackie directly, uh, if it would make sense for us to use the applications. I may have not replied on.
Either way, I just want to let everybody know where we stand on that. Um.
So just to clarify, I, I was not specifically applying or saying that I was interested. In only an at-large position. I was just expressing my interest.
I don't think those letters, uh, expressing interest preclude, uh, you know, uh, the selection to the two people who will be on the board. Um. I mean, I, I've given this a lot of thought and, and I have a recommendation and we can debate it. Um, I think personally I will defer. I mean, I've been involved in the housing pollution for a long, long time. But if we have city council members who, who are interested in being on this board, I want them to be on this board. Um, so that's, that's my, my first, first is I will defer, um. A- and at this point, my recommendation is going to be, uh, that, uh, Christian Lillial. And Ted Hill be the two selections for the board. Uh, partially because they have very, uh, you know, uh, different views. Of, of, you know, of the, the, a- a- at least not the housing authority per se. But at least how the tiers will, will fall out. And so I thought, well, it's either. Either one of them, either none of them or both of them. I guess that's the way I, I felt about it. And I don't know how the rest of city council feels about that, but I'd like to hear, uh, how we, we want to consider this.
Uh, I mean, first and foremost, I'll say we do have other partners, um. Tim being one of, uh, uh, Burgman, uh, to call, uh, who are also going to be in consideration of the period system. But I don't think we have to worry about it just being my way. So yeah, I was in and I was the one.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Uh, basically, um, as our ideas are different than, um. Tim and I's ideas are different. If, sorry, Tim Hill. Councilmember Hill, ideas are different. Uh, as council, uh, member Sills and I argues are different and we've expressed them at previous meetings. I don't necessarily think it, even if it was councilmember Hill or myself being on the meeting and not the other. That it would be our way necessarily, since there are other members in, uh, who are also have their own interests. And it would be one of, uh, one of four people choosing those. So I, I don't think that we necessarily have to have. Extremely different views on the same board per se, but obviously it comes up to consideration.
I would say I'm always fond of differing views. So that's just my way of thinking about it. And it'll be, you'll be one of seven, uh, ultimately that, that makes that decision. So. I, I just, I, I don't want to leave Shannon out necessarily, but, uh. She's, she's the new kid on the block. And so, um, you know, I, I felt like I had my reasons for, for this.
You are welcome to that. But I think that I get to speak up and share my voice too in terms of providing a different perspective. I have not been into the government or county government for, uh, an extended, extended period of time. I've expressed an interest. I acted on my interest. Um, as a person who's lived here a long time. Um, even longer than Christian, even though I have been born here, I wasn't born here. Um, I feel like that perspective and that, uh. Those values in terms of, of having raised my game like here can contribute to that. I also have the perspective of being a commuter. Um, and it's not a commute, uh, per se by choice. As you say, I can't do what I want to do here. And so I made the choice to commute, to do, to follow my passion and do my work. So I think that that's, um, an added bonus to that, that our community is full of commuters and it's not. Because they don't want to work here. It's because they want to live here.
Um, I will also say I'm totally in favor of Chen being on the board as well as myself. Um, I think it makes the most sense to have, um, Chen here for her experience. I mean, even from when you applied for the board, um, I've been to this school with kids, you know, I grew up with them. I know them well and you have mentioned that you were, uh, vice principal, is that right? Um, so you have plenty of experience, uh, not only from raising your own, but for being involved in that process. Of what it means to have a family in Leadville, um, and then Lake County at large. So I do genuinely think that those voices are going to matter a lot, especially in the elected official positions. Um, we're in the for at-large, considering that, that they have to be unanimous in our voting. Um, with both two county and two city-appointed officials. And I think Chen brings left to the table that even I, someone who's born and raised here, so, um, I would like to see that. Um, be something offered as well.
Okay, thank you. Tim?
Well, yeah, well, I, I think I bring lots to the table as well. I've been a local resident thirty-five years. Actually on the way to high school graduate. Um, my father's been here for. Forty-five years. And so I have a great connection. The city is a resident, but I've also been a business owner for twenty years. Sixteen of those years on Harrison Avenue. So I feel like I have. My finger on the pulse. Of the economics. Um, of. Of how things work. On, uh, a direct connection to. The workforce in the city of Black Elk. Which if I'm on that authority, I would. Definitely, uh, support and advocate for local workforce.
Thank you. We have no losers.
And I've also created my family.
Gotcha. Uh, Max, thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I really, I really don't know what. I'm kind of caught in an ethical dilemma, right? Is, is how I feel because I'm, I'm trying to. Um, figure out what is right for our community and I know that it doesn't stop with. With, um, who's essentially appointed to this board. However. You can be, you're, you know, you can be an advocate for, uh, you know, your, your position. You also have to be an objective analysis, an analyst as well. Um, and, and also somebody that they can, people can seek counsel for. And, and, uh, you know, I, I'm still trying to figure it out, um. Because, because I know that with Reed, we had that meeting with him last time. I really don't know if it's going to matter if we can, um, you know, i- the tiered approach. I don't know if we can exclude certain people the way that Reed has discussed it before. Um. And we're gonna have to live with something, but you know, I, I guess, I guess. One thing that comes up with me is that, I mean. Leadville and Lake County has served as a bedroom community for Summit County and Eagle County for a long time and. And, and they have a much more robust opportunity for their. Programs over there as well, much, much more higher. Um, and, and I lean in favor of what Tim is. Um, you know, his stance on the local workforce because. We need local workforce housing for the people that are, you know, that the services in our community, right? I'm talking not just from a, a business standpoint, but our police. Our firefighters, our hospital workers, our, our educators. Um, that our government employees, um, and yes, it's perhaps not. And, and I, and I also see. Uh. Councilmember Lino Lels, uh, um, a pro- position too where. We have to think about this in an equitable standpoint, uh, and, and those. Um, in our underserved part of our communities for such a long time. And how do we gain equity in, in our, in our community as a whole in rental and homeownership? So I know this is not a, this discussion isn't about that, but that's kind of where I go is that I. I, I don't know where that balance lays yet and, and as such. I, I would like to make sure we have a balance on, on that decision if it comes to it. Um. And it's not to say any one of these applicants are, you know. Better or worse, I think any of you would serve nobly in this effort. Um, however. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out like. Would, you know, that I, I'd like to hear from other council members, but that's kind of where I'm at. I'm on the fence. I, I really don't know what the right. Genetic makeup of this team is, although I do feel there has to be some significant robust conversation in regard to. Um, how we approach affordable housing and the tiered approach.
Thank you, Max. Tracy?
Um, I am leaning towards description and Shannon simply because I can say, Mayor, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Dana?
Um, I. Rather regret that the viewpoints of councilmember Hill and councilmember Luna Layar. Are poised as, um, being contrary to each other. I, I think unfortunately the severity of the housing crisis has. Has hidden. Very important. Sectors of our population, uh, or at least, I'm perceiving that it's poised various sectors of our population. Um, against each other for. Uh, something that really doesn't exist right now and probably will only exist in small quantities. Um, a- and so I just, I, I regret that, that there's that, I, I guess what I would like to do is shift and reframe. The thought process into what voices are, are represented on, uh, the housing authority. Um, because I think councilmember Hills. Representation as a business owner who has a vested interest in. Having employees who can live and work here, uh, is really important. I think that councilmember Luna Layal's. Advocacy for people who just simply live here and want to live here regardless of where they were, um, is. Very important also. Um, and councilmember Grants. Input both as a commuter and as someone who, as with councilmember Hill, has raised a family and has. Uh, over a, a long period of time and has seen kind of some of the shifting winds in town. Um, but I. I think. I am comforted by the fact that there are two at-large, um. Positions that also need to be filled and I, um. I, I really just, I really just want all three voices, um, to be represented. Um. But in this particular case, primarily because of our background and. Uh, forming the original housing authority and going through all of the, um. The work in, as i- i- in developing some of these tiers and some of the language that is currently being bandied about. Um, I would lean toward, uh, asking councilmember Hill and councilmember Luna Layal to serve. As representatives from the city based on their prior cousins in that, in that early development phase. Of the housing authority.
Thank you. I'm going to suggest two ways forward right now. One is we could do an open vote. By person, or I can go make copies of this page that has everybody on it. And we can vote and turn them into the, to the city clerk. Um, and do it that way. What is, which, which would you prefer?
Do open votes.
They have to be open eventually.
They have to be open eventually. I get it, but you know, sometimes it's, yeah, that. I, I tend to agree with that, but I also don't know if that would make any, anybody unpalatable.
I will say, um, just to address the point, I am a local worker. I will love to continue to be a local worker. I don't want to change you. Uh, that is not in my interest. I've done it before for a year, not big fan. Um, I don't think that, you know, me advocating for someone who. I mean, quite literally, if I were to, for example, want to pursue this as someone who doesn't own a home, who would be, you know. A suggestive good candidate for this who serves the community, um, at full circle, um. I think if I'm willing to say that I'm willing to lower my chances, not say that I don't want to be in that first tier. I think that the language that we've discussed has been inclusive to both workers and. You know, eventually also leading up to more bonus points if you are local workers with the suggested language I've, uh, had before. Um, basically a point being, I don't think that. That makes sense that we would be worried that we would be excluding our local workers if. Councilmember Hill is not a part of the building process. For multitude of reasons, um, some of which being the county has chosen their candidates. And I, we've heard their position before and they echo similarly to, uh, leaning towards, um, locally employed. Second is that I, I don't think anyone wants to exclude our local, uh, workers and. Nor to resentivize them from working here. I think we're just making sure that, um, you know, seventy percent of our populations also. Properly, um. Address. And then thirdly, I, there's going to be three other at-large members. I really find it hard to believe that they. Won't be local workers to some extent, or at least some of them won't be local workers. So I really don't think that we would be excluding, uh, the voices of locally employed or people who rely on working locally. Um, by excluding councilmember Hill, um, but obviously everyone has to make their own choice.
Okay. I'm going to say one thing and then we'll, and that is there is a much bigger picture here than, than I think we perceive. This is a huge proposition. This is not, this may be one of the biggest things we do in this county in quite some time. And we do a lot of big things. This housing authority is going to resonate well into the future. For this community and, uh, it's going to take a commitment, uh, of time. And, and, uh, and, and an emotional commitment to this community. To Max's point. Uh, what Reed does really is very separate from this. Uh, Reed has his own. We'll call him tiers or however you want to, but, but that's, that's the, that's the housing trust model and the one he's used. Uh, but the, the housing authority i- is, is going to, going to define going well into the future. How we approach housing. So, uh, this is a, this is a big deal. Just one of them. Yeah, that's, that's my opinion and my, my view of it. I would like, uh, for our city clerk to be prepared to, uh, keep track of the votes. You ready for that? Um. I'll go first because someone has to go under the bus. Uh, I've expressed how I feel about this. I, uh, I, uh, I will vote for Christian Lillial and for Ted Hill. Dana, would you like to go second?
I will pass my vote for councilmember Hill and councilmember Luna Layal.
Christian?
I'll pass my vote for councilmember Luna Layal and for councilmember Jen.
Thank you. Tracy?
Uh, Christian Luna Lial and Shannon Grant.
Thank you. Tim?
Uh, councilmember Hill, councilmember Lino Lial.
Thank you. Max?
Councilmember Luna Layal, councilmember Hill. Councilmember Luna Layal, councilmember Hill.
Thank you. Good conversation, nicely done. Oh, I'm so sorry. Ms. Gray?
Hill and Luna Layal.
Thank you. Oh, interesting.
We're not arm wrestling.
Your full, your full surprises.
Maybe we should though.
Please do.
Uh, we have seven votes for, uh, Luna Layal. We have five votes for councilmember Hill and we have two votes for councilmember. To Laurenson and she voted out. No, that's why we didn't express that.
Uh, it was, it was actually, it was actually admiration, if you must know. Um, thank you all very much. Good conversation. Um, this, uh, this is the start of something big and I appreciate people's willingness to step up and, and be part of this. Thank you so much.
I do, I would like to say for the record that I want my at-large application to still be considered, please.
Jackie has it in, in part of the board. Great, thank you. Um, next up, we have, we need to put this in resolution and this is resolution number thirty-six through twenty-two. Resolution appointing members to the Leadville Lake County Regional Housing Authority Board of Directors. And I, where in here does it actually name them in the resolution or does it?
I think we need to look at their names.
Does it have that in there?
He blanks. So I think what you need to do is, uh, leave the, uh, motions to
It, it's the, the, the verbiage is, I don't even know what page it's on, but it says.
If you look at the proposed motion on the package.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm sorry. I was still looking at the I P A.
Yeah.
You'll read the motion language and then put in the blanks, you put the names of the, uh, two councilmembers that nominated or voted on.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion on resolution number thirty-six series of twenty-twenty-two.
Green moves to adopt resolution number thirty-six, series of twenty-twenty-two. A resolution appointing members to the Leadville Lake County, excuse me, Regional Housing Authority Board of Directors and appoint Christian Luna Layal and Tim Hill to the authorities board. I further move to direct city staff to update the resolution prior to signing it to reflect the names of these appointees.
No, and then seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember for Denny?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Layal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yeah.
Councilmember Laurenson?
Yes.
Mayor Love?
Yes. Thank you very much. Uh, at this time we have the public meetings planner. After no, I haven't even looked at it. Does anybody have any, any additions, deletions?
I, um, I do want to mention that I will be adding these that, um, Donna Knegger budgets for the work session.
Thank you.
Never having done a work session, is that any different than what we're doing right now? We sit at that.
It's, it's informal. Yeah, yeah, that, that's the difference. And now we have an hour, if you go to that.
That's going to be so good.
We also, during a work session can't make any voted on decisions.
We're just talking.
It's, it's not, it's not a regular meeting, it's not a meetings.
There won't be any more discussions. Thank you.
Then we get to the final, uh, the final session where we actually make decisions, we'll declare a special meeting.
And is the public in attendance at that?
They're welcome, but no.
I'm just wondering.
It's, 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 yeah. The answer is okay. Actually, I shouldn't say occasionally we'll have someone in the public who wants to comment on something. Um, mayor's report, uh, you know, we hear a lot about AMI, uh, area median income. I've got new AMI numbers and, um, they're just, they give you some insights into, into what it means, um, in terms of affordability. Uh, and so I just, I found those pretty interesting and, and Max, I can, I can email these to you. Should be three pages.
That, Max, you've gone sideways on us.
I believe that Jackie also didn't know.
That's why I got these was Jackie. I just didn't know, you know, that again, we, we always talk about AMI, but what does it really mean? And this really defines it in terms of rental property and, and also in terms of the affordability of, of, of housing. So that's all, that, just for your elucidation. Uh, last thing I'll have is, uh, I, um, met with Lori today and, uh, according to our offer level to her, there was going to be a six-month review, which I did, and I just, I want to highlight how thrilled I am to have Lori Simonson running our city. And I, I can't be more sincere about that. She's taken so much pressure off of me, uh, and it's not like I've run out of things to do, but, uh, but she has, she has shown initiative. She hasn't waited around, you know, for instructions about how to dive in and run this city and, and meet with departments and make decisions. Um, just, just a fabulous job. Thank you, Lori. Any council reports?
I don't want, I attended the, uh, music at Zine tonight and it was lovely. It was, um, they were a little late in getting started, but, uh, it was a lot of fun. I appreciate that.
Do we have one more?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, are you down for?
Well, I have one more thing and I don't know that it's a report. I don't know how to do this. So if y'all tell me that this is not the right time to say something, tell me. But I was thinking back to the parking, you mentioned having a conversation with people on Seventh Street. I'm one of those people on West Seventh Street and I am wondering how do I request that we entertain painting not diagonal spots, but parallel spots? Because there is parking, but we have residents who are putting their trash cans out to hold half of the spots. So we're wasting half spots down the, down the road. Um, we have, you know, other people who put their trash out, like the literal trash out in the street to hold spots. And I wondered if we could entertain that, if we could discuss painting parallel. I think that's what you call them, parallel spots. On both sides of this is a spot so that we're not losing half spots as we go.
Yeah, if we do twenty-five foot spots all the way down the wall, it should work. Thank you for that. I, it's been on my mind to call the striping company back just to finish up what they've done and, uh, uh, that will, I'll add that to the list.
I think that is worth talking about. Does anybody have anything?
Nope, done.
I mean, I'll add on.
Yeah.
Do Seventh East as well. There's plenty.
What's that?
I could do Seventh East as well. There's plenty of room there and too many cars in one place to leave, uh.
The Seventh, Seventh East has diagonal parking.
Up to a certain point, up to basically with trainings, that word above it, um, has basically I, we sometimes we have to park at different locations of different streets because it's too full. But it's super wide and open for diagonal parking or diagonal parking.
So above Maple? Thank you. Any other suggestions for striking Tracy?
Anthony, text the Delaware, how I think that have block and free parking.
I have that. Uh, I think I'll, I'll ask our police chief to do just that. Yeah, they, they take up that loading zone. They, a lot of time their trailers parked there for days and times.
Construction, wait, leaning in, I don't, it's a half block and everything.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Diagonal parking on, uh, East Eleven Street, which I love.
Yeah, we felt like it was wide enough to do that.
Yeah, it is, it is. I didn't consider it a parking problem on that street, but I, it's, yeah, funny enough.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Are we going reverse fifty?
That's my intent. I, I, I still don't hate it. Uh, but I've had enough people who are uncomfortable with it, but I think it bears, bears the whistle. But, but just the Pope's office section. You know, I, I think the, the first, you know, half block, it's working really well and especially for county employees and stuff. Uh, it seems like it's, it's added quite a bit of parking right here.
I have not heard anything negative about the, the stuff in front of the post office, except for the first spot where you try to turn out. It's like it extends over too far. We need a little help there.
The truth of the matter is diagonal parking causes that all the time. When I'm coming across pop or headed, you know, forsaken, let's say, there are a couple of streets where I have to creep out halfway to the street before I can see it around. It, it, it is an issue with diagonal parking that's just endemic to it.
I will say, I actually got into a car accident for that reason. I'm actually, uh, I'm sick coming up towards these. Um, I've got going to the fast, I was backing out. Can't really see anything. So, um, in Colorado State law is that whatever's ever seen is at fault.
Really?
Yeah, regardless of, of actual availability to see. So just know that that is a potential issue that may be brought forward in the future. I insurance cover it, so to say, for, but it is obviously not the most ideal.
Okay, thank you.
What about making those spots like half parking lots, um, open cycle?
That's a, that's a, it's a, it's a good idea because insurance visibility really helps. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for bringing that up. Um, any other council reports?
Yeah, um, so Full Circle has officially helped, uh, two hundred families get connected to ERAB services well, well over now for the very minimum three months, some up to eighteen months of rental assistance, meaning we brought a hundred families. Um, as of two thousand and twenty-one, like, twenty-one, September twenty-fourth. So in that less than a year span, uh, but that funding is now over as of September. So there is a clear need for, if we've been able to with minimal advertising that this is a program and purely off of water mouth, um, been able to assist that many new, different, unique people. Uh, not including anyone who may have re-appplied. Um, then there's a clear need for rental assistance, uh, mainly due to the high, um, increases on rent. Um, we've been seeing that a lot where people are stable, were stable before, uh, the pandemic and the pandemic, maybe they thought COVID got a little bit behind. But now even though they're working full-time, they just can't keep up. The wages aren't matching their pay, uh, their rent pay. So that's, I'm glad that we have, uh, the housing authority now in place to potentially look at this um, prevention option, but it's, it's going to hit us back and we're, I'm not sure we'll be ready for that. Um, yeah, we'll see what happens. It was state funding, um, initially fully used for COVID relief funds, anyone who's been impacted for COVID, starting from the pandemic, um, to now could apply for these. So, uh, we worked specifically with CDP. I'm asking what the acronym stands for in the book, um, there's wasting of acronyms. Um, but they were our partners and we were there to get Lake County specific, um, residents to get rental assistance. And it was a wildly successful program. Um, really high approval rating from people who applied at a reasonable AMI, all renters, of course, there's other help for mortgage assistance and for higher in fund them who may need it, but, um, yeah, two hundred eighty percent AMI loan, um, rental assistance people. And that's, it's going to be our big worry is what's going to happen once that's out. We, we're just not sure. We don't have any good ideas of how we're going to continue to support those families that have been kind of alone on this assistance to get by.
Yes.
You're muted. I, I, I first want to commend, uh, Christian in full circle for all the great work on our underserved communities and community members that need in, in Leadville. Uh, you know, I, I'm not there today because I'm down here, um, in Santa Fe, uh, working for the Carson Santa Fe National Forest uh, on their, as their disaster recovery coordinator for the next couple of weeks. I'm coming up just for the weekend to, to help out with the races, but I'll be back down there next week as well where I'm at right now. Uh, but to put underserved communities in, in a different perspective too, is largest fire in New Mexico burned three hundred thirty-eight thousand acres, uh, two-thirds of which was on private land. Uh, over six hundred primary structures burned and those are mostly underserved communities. And those communities are, um, uh, struggling with, uh, just basic services. I mean, housing you think, because that's one thing, there's no housing for six hundred families plus right now, or they're finding it right now. FEMA is having a tough time finding a place to put trailers because there is no um, electricity, water and sewer that they require to put down for their, um, for their mobile homes. And, uh, cell phone service is no longer available in certain areas. Uh, Wi-Fi is no longer available. They can't collect firewood to, uh, heat their homes and cook their food. They don't have, um, uh, their sequias are damaged and to put, um, you know, insult to injury, second order effects of, uh, all these months. So moisture created flooding, uh, and blown out and killed other folks after the fact uh, by post-fire floods, knocking out road systems, critical road systems and infrastructure and making it so some communities don't even have water, uh, yet alone, um, housing. I mean, we're talking about basic necessities. So, um, I just want, I, I just, I feel very, uh, fortunate on what we have in Leadville as much as we think that we're having an issue and we are. Um, that just to the south, our neighbors are, are struggling um, in a different way than I, I wouldn't even imagine, um, unless I saw it firsthand here. So, um, I just want to tell you why I'm not there and what the heck I'm doing. Uh, it's, it's a lot of work and, um, but I hope it's for the greater good in, in the future. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Max. Thanks for all you do.
I respond to man.
Please.
Um, which is north of Las Vegas for years. My house came within a quarter mile of burning down. Thank you for what you're doing. That community is definitely saying it's just it's perfect, I think.
Yes. Thank you, Max. Does anybody else have any, uh, council reports? Thank you all very much. Uh, it is nine oh six. The city council meeting is adjourned.